Welcome. As the Chair of this meeting, I need to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. School committee members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Elizabeth Albota?
Yes.
Mary Bradley?
Yes.
Natasha Rivera?
Yes.
And Mauro Hogan?
Yes.
Okay. Student reps, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Annie Kaneska? No. Kate Carlisle?
Don't know if either one of them are here.
Okay. Maybe it doesn't work with their schedule being a Tuesday.
Might be.
Staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Colleen Andrade?
Here.
Jeff Frante?
Yes.
Charles Gabron? Brian Haas?
Yes.
Wayne White?
Yes.
Rob Rulo? Mike Barth?
He's muted.
Oh, he's still muted.
I'm here.
Thanks. And Chuck Karagyanis?
Here.
Thank you. This open meeting of the Maynard School Committee is being conducted remotely as allowed by the Act Governor Baker signed into law on June 16th, 2021, an act extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency, includes an extension until April 1st, 2022 of the remote meeting provisions of this March 12th, 2020 executive order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. The new law has two major parts. First, the new law allows public bodies to continue providing live adequate alternative means of public access to the deliberations of the public body, instead of holding meetings in a public place that is open and physically accessible to the public. Second, the new law authorizes all members of a public body to continue participating in meetings remotely. Open meeting laws requirement that a quorum of the body and the chair be physically present at the meeting location remains suspended. All other provisions of the open meeting law and regulations such as the requirements regarding posting notice of meetings and creating and maintaining accurate meeting minutes remain in effect. Public bodies are reminded that notice of all meetings must be posted at least 48 hours in advance, not including weekends and holidays, and the meeting notice must clearly specify how the public may access the meeting, whether in person, remote, or both. This committee is commuting by Zoom video conferences posted on the district's website. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that all attendees are participating via video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you and take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording, which is audible to and viewable by the public. Additionally, please let the Chair know if you are recording or broadcasting this meeting prior to doing so. Use the raise your hand function now if you are planning to record or broadcast this meeting, so I can make note of it. Most of the supporting materials that have been provided for the members of this body are available on the Maynard Public Schools website in a folder titled 2021-2022 Agendas, under the tab Agendas, under the tab School Committee. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda and documents unless the Chair notes otherwise. Citizens' comments. Any citizen wishing to make a comment to be read during a virtual meeting and entered into the public record may do so by emailing comments to comments4sc@maynard.k12.ma.us. Comments need to be emailed in advance and will be received up until the citizens' comments agenda item is addressed. Please include public comment in the subject line and your full name and street address in the body of your email. Emails without this information cannot be read. To ensure that your statement is read in its entirety, a 350-word limit is suggested. Statements longer than 350 words may be cut short at the three-minute mark in the interest of time, but will be submitted in their entirety for the public record. Comments are limited to three minutes or 350 words to ensure that everyone has the opportunity to be heard. The Chair will read only one statement from each citizen. However, citizens can submit any additional comments for the public record by providing a copy to the Chair via email up until the end of the meeting, explicitly stating their desire to have these additional comments included in the public record. Please be aware that the purpose of the citizens' comments period is a devoted time for the school committee to hear from the community it serves. As such, the protocol supports the unidirectional public sharing of citizens' comments rather than a bidirectional conversation. Before we go to the first item on the agenda, permit me to cover some ground rules for the effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. I will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After the speaker concludes their remarks, I will ask each member in turn if they have a single comment, question, or motion that they would like to make. I'll go through the members for additional comments or questions if time allows. Please hold off on speaking until your name is called, and remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate meeting minutes. Accurate minutes, sorry. Please do not interrupt anyone who is speaking and seeking if the Chair requests you to do so. Finally, each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by a roll call vote.
Sorry. Sorry, my dog. Um, so, uh, is Principal Rulo on now? And, um, is his audio working? Can you confirm?
Yes, I'm here.
Thank you.
No problem, Hillary.
Um, and Charles Gabron, is your audio working now?
I think he's muted, but I see him mouthing.
Okay. Um, okay. So, roll call to come to order, Mauro Hogan? Oh, thank you. Mauro?
Yes.
Mary? But Mary's muted.
She got muted, and Elizabeth got muted again.
Okay, Natasha?
I'm, yes.
Harry?
Yes. Sorry, I muted because of the dog. Go ahead. My dog.
And then Elizabeth.
Yes.
Okay. Um, for citizens' comments? Just a second.
I believe there was one that came in just as the meeting was starting, um, as well.
I did add it.
Okay.
Okay, Karen Ross, Two Country Lane, Maynard, Mass. Dear Superintendent and members of the school committee, I am writing with a concern about the recent announcement about summer programs for Maynard students, which includes high school summer courses costing $100 each. I find it difficult to understand the rationale behind this $100 charge. We know that the students who are most likely to have had their education impacted over the past two years by COVID-19 are the same students for whom paying $100 per summer school class is likely to be a financial burden. Charging students for attending summer school courses, especially those students who are attending in order to address learning losses from the past two years, is likely to increase inequities among students, the opposite of what we want to be doing. Further, given Maynard's receipt of federal funding to help mitigate learning loss due to COVID-19, charging students for these classes seems even more problematic. I encourage you to reconsider this decision and make summer school classes free for all students in Maynard who might benefit from them. Thank you. And the second one is, my name is Sheena Macamara, 77 Waltham Street. I have concerns about the recent email sent out regarding summer school and charging $100 per course for high school students that fell behind due to Corona. And in the very next paragraph, offering free summer camp for kids to build rockets and bridges. While I think that's great, I don't understand why students and parents are being charged for actual schooling needed to catch up and potentially to graduate. Were there no funds or grants received that would cover said costs? I don't see how it's justified to offer free rocket building camp and not actual education. I'd also like to state publicly for the record that I have previously submitted a FOIA request to Colleen, Brian, and all school committee members, requesting multiple documents regarding the Esser grant received, the three bids for the SEL program Maynard chose, the contract of the SEL program, all SC minutes, and all email correspondence regarding Esser grants, just to name a few. I still have not received a response or quote for production of documents. Thank you for your time. My name is Victor Grazdanowski, 28 Waltham Street. I am writing to ask a question and voice my concerns. My question is, when will school committee meetings go back to in-person? There is no longer an indoor mask mandate in Maynard. Weather is nicer. It makes no sense to continue Zoom meetings. I feel by doing so, you have effectively taken away the voice of us parents, the people you are appointed to represent. Over the last few weeks, I have seen you completely ignore concerned parents, and there's been literally zero discussion publicly on issues parents are concerned about. One that caught my attention was sexually pornographic books available to kids in the library. You have not once brought up the issue and just ignored that and many other parent comments. I believe you all have formed a false sense of power and authority hiding behind screens and only addressing issues that align with your personal beliefs. It's time to bring meetings back to in-person and look us in the eyes while you try to dismiss our concerns about our children. The power trip needs to stop now. You are...
Uh-oh.
Uh-oh.
You are appointed to represent all parents equally. Signed, an extremely fed-up parent.
Frozen.
Oh. Hillary, I finished that one comment. Sorry, you froze.
Okay, sorry.
Oh, you froze again. Hillary, you froze again. Do you want me to try, or are you...
I think I should be okay. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, so you finished, um, Victor's?
Yes.
Okay. Elliot Prisby, one Elm Hurts. Many members and Superintendent Haas, it's come to my attention that summer school classes for high school students will cost 100 per class this year. I am discouraged to hear this. Kids who have had their learning affected by COVID-19 or other factors should be able to supplement their...
I will pick up. Supplement their education free of charge. This is particularly true, given that the kids most affected by the pandemic are likely from lower-income, non-white, housing-insecure families, who are less likely to be able to afford to bring their kids back up to speed, according to the study by Harvard University. All of our kids should be given the opportunity to excel, not just those whose families can afford it. I've attached the Harvard study. Thank you for your time and consideration. And there's an attached study cited. Okay, I'll continue. Oh, Hillary, sorry, there you are. You're muted now. Oh, she's muted now. Colleen, I don't know if you're able to... There, thanks.
Do you want to just keep going, just in case it happens again?
Sure. Um, okay. Nicole Carlin, 22 Driscoll. I continue to struggle to understand the method of which the Esser funds is being spent. To alleviate financial burden and address learning loss, the federal government made an unprecedented amount of funding available to schools. Maynard Public Schools received almost $1.5 million in the form of three federal grants. This funding was to be used to support safe reopening and continued operation of schools to measure and address significant learning loss and address social, emotional, and mental health. To address mental health problems brought on by the pandemic, a yoga program was purchased with Esser funds for $35,000. This program includes eight 30-minute yoga sessions per student, plus supplemental online content in the form of YouTube videos. To date, the online content remains widely incomplete. Students are being pulled from classroom instruction and zone to take yoga. Who was on the committee to assess and identify the mental needs, the mental health needs of the student body? Who identified and compared programs to address these needs? What were the goals of the program? Who made the decision to choose yoga, and why was it chosen over the alternatives? Were MA procurement laws followed for this purchase? How do you plan on measuring the success of this program? Ironically, last week, a newsletter from the high school announced recovery credit classes were available this summer for students who were at risk of not graduating. The cost to those students is $100 per class. After receiving $1.5 million to address learning loss, the district is going to charge students to attend summer school. The perception of this is that if a student has access to money, they can graduate. Has the DEI committee reviewed this plan? Why is the Esser grant not being used to fund the staffing and tuition of credit recovery classes this year? How did the district spend $35,000 for yoga but will not fund a credit recovery program? The fiscal decision-making over the past two years is raising questions about the integrity, competency, and values of the district leadership. Next year, I hope leadership will be more transparent, proactive, and evidence-based in its decision-making, not only to maximize the desired outcome, but also to get the most return on our spending. Next comment. Julie Blazar, one Maynard, I'm sorry, one Mayfield Street. Dear members of the school committee, Superintendent Haas, and Principals Karagyanis and Caruso, I saw the following notice on the March 4th MHS newsletter. Do you need credit recovery for previously taken courses? If so, then summer school is for you. Costs $100 per course. Knowing the MPS cares about educational equity, I was surprised to see a cost associated with credit recovery. Is it possible to offer these courses for free, or at a minimum to make them free, for those who qualify for free or reduced lunch? Thank you in advance for your help to ensure student access to a qual... To... To, um, bleh, sorry, my apologies. Helping to ensure student access to quality education. Sincerely, Julie Blazar. P.S., on a different note, but also related to equitable learning environments, I'm looking forward to learning what Superintendent Haas promised to share about ventilation and air purification at Green Meadow. Specifically, are commercial-grade air purifiers running in all spaces where adequate window ventilation isn't continuously available? Superintendent Haas said he'd provide air quality information the week the masks became optional, and I have yet to see that information. Next comment. Jeffrey Mann, 39 Fairfield Street. I've noticed that the Board of Health actually allows for citizen comments to be read by citizens, and the Select Board also apparently allows citizens to speak at meetings. I'm curious for the reasoning why the citizens' comments for school committee meetings are limited and only allow via submitted email, and citizens or parents aren't allowed to actually speak for themselves. And I think that may have...
I just checked, and there aren't any last-minute ones.
Nothing else has come in.
Okay, thank you all.
Okay, next is urgent business. I'm still having some trouble with the internet, so Natasha, I may need you to pick up again.
All right, let me...
But, um, we can start urgent business with Brian.
Yeah, we have one piece of urgent business that came in late last week, and just due to the fact that it's March and we don't, we're not on an every-the-other-week cycle. And the urgent business would be the Maynard High School band and orchestra trip to Orlando, Florida during April of 2023. So it's not next month, it's a year out. But, as you well know, it takes a lot of planning and fundraising and a lot of logistics and reservations if the thought is, we're going to be able to go in April of next year. So what they're looking for, and I think the information's been in the folder since late last week, the dates are April 13th to the 17th. It's five days, four nights. Dates are to be decided, but that's a ballpark. They need to, they plan on doing fundraising. The cost, as an estimate, is around $2,000 per person, and that's based on last year's quotes. They'll have a maximum of a 1 to 10 ratio. A nurse will be in attendance at all times. Cindy Blanchard and Kevin Kozick, the music directors, will obviously be part of the experience. So they're looking for, and it's got support both from Principal Karagyanis and myself. Principal Karagyanis is on the screen if you have questions for him. But we both support this and would ask the school committee to give them approval to begin making the logistical arrangements, knowing if something were to come up, given the pandemic and whatnot, and we need to reassess, we could do that in the future if necessary.
Anybody have any questions before we, um, before we read that?
I had a question about, oh, sorry.
All right, go ahead.
Um, I just had a question about the potential. I know prior, um, they had a refund policy to that extent. Is there something similar where a date would be a final date if there's funding or amounts paid that we'd have to know? I don't know, I'm just, I know we're not quite out of, I know we're not quite out of a pandemic. I envision, I'm hoping that we're continuing in this positive direction, but I would like to have a better understanding of, one, what the urgency would be now to decide this? And two, um, what are, what a refund policy would be? What loss we might have if we approve it now and later on circumstances change in six months?
So I don't have the refund. I don't know that they're actually that far along in the process. I think they're looking for the approval so that they are able to determine the best options for travel agencies, which would include refunds and things like that, and who they want to work with. In addition, they will be scheduling mandatory stu-, parents-student informational meetings in April pending a full approval. So they're very much in the infancy, but they don't want to move forward unless they have the approval of the board.
Mary?
Um, this may be overstepping, but, um, can we have as a prerequisite that everyone has to be vaccinated and boosted? Or is that asking too much?
We don't even do that to come to school.
Okay, just...
I think that's asking a lot, for certain.
Just asked.
Fair enough.
Um, would we want to make a motion to approve it with the understanding that, um, you know, it'll be brought back to the school committee when we get close to whatever date is the ultimate date that the approval would need to be, like a refund would be available? So that if things change next December, um, you know, we're not, uh, bound to it if things change? Or are we good with just the understanding that this, you know, that would happen anyway?
I, I mean, I would like to have a little bit, I know in the prior, uh, request that we reviewed, there was a little bit more information about that, you know, cancellation aspect. And I, I, I'd be wholeheartedly excited that this would be able to happen. I just want to make sure that the decision-making that we're voting on isn't at a detrimental loss to someone after they've done tremendous fundraising and monies can't be recouped in some way if in six months, you know, things look different. I just want to be responsible for, you know, the efforts that people are doing and what people might be, you know, putting out of pocket. And so I guess what I would question is, is this something that maybe could be at a next meeting? Do they need to know now? Or, um, I... Can you speak a little bit more why now, without that information, and why we wouldn't be able to visit it at a future meeting?
We can certainly revisit, but they really need an answer now so that they can start the planning phase. So it's not, so in... They want to be able to reach out to travel agencies, hotels, um, and other groups and start fundraising. And I think Principal Karagyanis probably knows some of the more specifics of this. I'm, um...
I'm wondering if there would be more of a motion of, than just thinking about that, that we would be able to approve, but before financial commitments are made, that we would then be provided, you know, circle back to us with, you know, what those other details are contractually.
Let's have Principal Karagyanis explain more, because he's been raising his hand.
The, uh, the reason they need the approval is, um, given the pandemic, a number of schools are interested in going to Disney again. They've all been shut out for two years, and there's a limited number of slots in the April vacation week that they allocate to school bands for this competition. If we wait two more weeks, there's an excellent chance there'll be no slots left for us to even register for. This is according to Cindy Blanchard, who's been doing the Disney trips for years, where, where, we're looking for the approval tonight just so they can contact Disney and say, put us in to this time slot. They will be fundraising, they will be, uh, this would also authorize them to fundraise. I know for the last trip, they purchased the insurance to, uh, you know, cancellation insurance. I suspect, although I can't say with 100% certainty, I can say with a high degree of confidence, if you will, which is less than 100%, but they're, they're not going to be dumb about this. And they'll be looking for insurance once again. But the reason for the urgency right now is so that if we wait another school committee cycle, they may find the option doesn't even exist.
Mauro?
Um, haven't we had previous trips over the last two years planned and also canceled? So don't we already have kind of background on what has happened before? That I, I guess I don't see the, the purpose of waiting. I think, you know, we can assume that if you do the insurance and, you know, we can use previous practices, um, to go forward. But I would, I would love to have, um, you know, in the next, I don't know, what, once things have a more solidified outlook on what the plan is, I would love, just for information purposes, to have, um, some, you know, you to come back, Chuck, and, um, you know, give us more information. But I don't see a reason why we should, um, put it on hold.
Elizabeth?
Um, yeah, my question is, I'm curious about why we need to, it seems that the question is not, can they go? But can they start planning? Do I have that right?
Almost.
Okay.
It's also that until we have school committee approval, they don't feel comfortable contacting Disney to reserve dates. That's part of the planning process, but it's a gatekeeper. Um, if we wait two more weeks, at least according to Cindy, and she's been doing this for years, there may not be a slot left for the Maynard High School band during the April vacation week. Um, so, so they want to be able to just contact Disney and say, yes, we want this slot during that week. It would also trigger the planning stage, but that's the critical piece. Otherwise, we, we could wait two more weeks or four more weeks. But they're very worried about not even having a date available.
So, um, I was only on the school committee since we had to say no to the, them going this year. But did they also come last year to ask if they could contact Disney? Or is this new because everything is so fluid?
It's, it's new because Disney is experiencing an unusual rush of...
Just because...
Orders nationwide, because so many bands were not able to travel. A, a lot of schools do this on a cycle every two years or every four years. So there's essentially pent-up demand that is putting in, in undue demand compared to other years. And, and that's why they're afraid that the slots will be gone.
No, I just, I, I understand all that. I'm just wondering if it's standard protocol in the past for them to ask us before they contact Disney to sort of reserve spots?
It, it, it has been. In other words, they, they usually come in and say, can we go to Disney? And here's some parameters, and it's with a little bit less urgency than it is this year.
So then I, I'm sorry, I didn't mean, sorry, I didn't know you weren't finished.
No, I was, I was about to say.
Okay, and then, so it sounds like then, if the standard protocol last time was that they asked if they could reserve the spots, and then they did, and then they had to come to us again to see if they could go. So that seems like the protocol is already in place, and that's what people ask.
There are typically, there are typically a few reports along the way to the school committee about how things are going.
Okay, all right, sounds good. And, and just to clarify, because I know Natasha was asking about this too, um, if, if we say, go ahead, and they reserve these spots at Disney, and then we have to rescind them, and for some reason, is there a penalty to any student or parent for that?
Well, that's why, that's why they'd be looking into travel insurance. I, I guess there is the, there is the risk that you lose the travel insurance fee, but you know, that limits the exposure.
Okay, got it, okay.
Natasha?
Does the, um, commitment to Disney to reserve, does that, does that come with a financial commitment? Or is it just on, on word in reserving?
You don't, I honestly don't know.
Okay. And I think just the distinction is a little bit different, Mauro. Just, we, um, I think the proposals in the past that we've seen have had more language about like refunds or, you know, cancellation, which is this, I didn't see that here, which is where my, my question's kind of, if the insurance, if it's gonna be, again, I don't want to assume, but it sounds like it will be the same as seeking the insurance. That would be, I think, for me, um, fantastic. I, I know in the past, we had done an approval last year or contingent on, um, if health circumstances change, then we would revisit that. And I don't know if maybe as a committee, that would be more of the, the type of motion that we would want to consider. We approve contingent on, um, change in health circumstances that might inhibit in the future.
Anyone else? I think that, um, it's probably, you know, certainly, if, if it's not safe to go, we won't approve it. approve it when it comes time for the students to actually go. And I assume that the administration would bring it to us before we reach the point where the kids would lose money. I think that the, the last time we voted on the Disney trip was like five months before the expected trip or six months before the trip, when they were reaching that point where money, they would lose money. So I don't know if we want to just make a motion that takes that into consideration. That we certainly want the kids to go and have that experience. That I, I think everybody understands that there's some sort of caveat right now with any type of planning a year off. But put it in the motion that it's approved barring any safety issues that make it unrealistic and that we will get an update before the school, anybody passes that point where money will be non-refundable.
I think Hillary, the, um, so I think that vote that were, when it, when the fall, I think when it got reassessed was because the motion in the spring, we made it that way. It was contingent on, so that's why I was saying to follow that similar. Otherwise, if we just approve it, normally this doesn't come back to us for any other vote. There, I, I don't recall that would be a reason why we would be voting on it again. It would just be that we would approve it. So there is really no second revisit of it, I guess. I don't know. Mary, correct me if I'm
In the, in the past, it was pretty much a given. It was pretty much a slam dunk that we just approved it.
Right. So I think
Do you want to make a motion that's similar to the motion that was made last year? Oh, Colleen?
Myself, she's made it. Last year's motion was to, um, well, this is the motion to rescind it. It was a motion to rescind the prior condition. It was a conditional approval for allowing travel for the Maynard High School Music Department trip to Florida.
So, so I'll make a motion that we conditionally approve the trip for the spring, April 2023 for the music department. Pending continued improved health circumstances, allowing travel for to do so at that time. I don't know if that makes any sense or that sounds doable. All right. Thanks, Colleen.
A second.
All right. Um, any discussion? Does that work for you, Brian and Chuck?
I think so.
Okay.
And could it be just make sure, I mean, at some point, not maybe not for meeting discussion, but you could circulate for own peace of mind, what those refund, cancellation, all those details, once they become known, it'll be just helpful.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay, roll call vote. Natasha?
Yes.
Mauro?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Elizabeth?
Yes.
And I'm a yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Yeah, I hope they really get to go this time.
I know, I know. It'll be really, really exciting. Have fun planning.
Yeah.
Yeah. I feel so bad for the students that haven't been able to go the previous years. Do we have either the student reps on now? No? Okay. So the Civics MCAS pilot presentation, is that Mike Barth?
Right. And he's on. He might need to be unmuted, Colleen.
Hi, everybody. I'm here.
Thank you.
I just had to get myself back into upright position after I was just kind of hanging out. So, uh, Colleen, do you want to share the slideshow? All right, great. So I asked Brian to come tonight, just to very briefly, five or 10 minutes, give you an update on something that we chose to do this year. The state, if you, if you haven't heard, the state of Massachusetts is, um, is currently offering districts the opportunity to pilot the Civics MCAS. And, uh, so it's an optional thing that we signed up for. The Civics MCAS may in fact never come to fruition. They've gone down this route before. I believe in the mid 2000s, when I, just when I left the classroom, uh, there was a talk of a history MCAS and maybe even a pilot for, for a year. But the purpose is to just grab this opportunity so that, um, you know, we're prepared in case it becomes a real requirement. Next slide. This would be most closely connected to a superior academic experience. Next slide. And we just want to learn as much as we can. Again, it was voluntary. And it can, it's not like your typical ELA math or science MCAS. So I'll talk about that tonight, but it has three parts. Next slide. So this is really the meat and potatoes. Um, if you ever sort of forget about the Civics MCAS and you want to come back and see what it's all about, this would be a great slide to reference. You can see there's a, uh, this civics assessment and it's got a performance task set, which can, which consists of two parts. Those will be done at Fowler in April. And, um, the first part is called a local level classroom performance task. And the state has contracted with Moodle to provide materials to Ms. Robichaud to, uh, to conduct that performance task. And the second part of the performance task is the state level performance task. And it's administered on TestNav, which is the normal application that students use in all schools in Massachusetts to take the ELA math and science MCAS. And then the third part, so both of those will be done in April. Those have to be done within one week of each other. So the first, the local level classroom task happens first. Then about a week later, the state level performance tasks happen. Actually, we're doing it two days later. And then the end of course, computer based test happens by June 10th. Um, I believe Ms. Robichaud and I picked a day in very late May for this. But it's the end of course, computer based test, and it is also administered on TestNav, which is the application that students are familiar with for their other MCAS tests. Next slide. So the first part is the performance task set. And it focuses on one of the seven topics in the grade eight history and social science framework. And there is both a local and state level task, which I described in the prior slide. We were selected for topic three, which is called institutions of US government. So we could have been selected for topic one or topic five, but we were selected for topic three. Institutions of US government. Next slide. So what that means is for the local, uh, performance task, uh, students will, uh, take, do this performance task in groups in 45 minutes. I've seen the materials. I can't share them because they're secure materials, but I've taken a look at the materials and it's a straightforward performance task where the students have a, a small article to read. And then they have to process it in a group, uh, task in a couple of different ways. The, the, um, the local performance task is scored by Ms. Robichaud. And it is not reported, the actual scores for it are not reported to, um, to DESI. Next slide. So then there, two days later, the students will do the state level performance task. This time they'll go into TestNav, the familiar application for MCAS. And they will do this in, uh, task individually. It also takes about 45 minutes to complete. And incorporates various types of questions that the students are used to. Such as multiple choice, technology enhanced. What, what they mean when they say technology enhanced is things like dragging and dropping, which students now frequently do on their other MCAS tests. Short answers and longer answer items. And this, because it's done on TestNav, is scored by the state. And, but because of this is, this is a pilot this year, we will not get any, uh, student, school or district results from this. So I won't be able to come back to you and say, here's how we did on the pilot. Next slide. And part three is the end of course, computer based test. And this is what you might more typically expect a Civics MCAS to look like. It is, even though it takes approximately 45 minutes to complete, students will have unlimited time. Just like a traditional MCAS test. 18 to 20 questions sounds about right for a single session of ELA or a single session of the math. So it's about like what a single session of ELA math or science would, would be like with, with the exception though, that all of these, um, items that the students are answering are machine scored items. There's no writing on this. Um, and the reason for that is because it's at the end of the school year where it would be too late to, to, to get data back to schools in a timely manner. Again, it states scored and, uh, but again, because of the pilot, we will not get any results from this, uh, from this pilot this year. Next slide. If anyone is interested, uh, there is a link on, um, I believe you can actually just Google it. Type in DESI MCAS Civics Pilot. It'll bring you to a page with some resources. This is a link I grabbed. Where you can actually see the practice tests that they have published publicly available on the internet for you to see kind of what the, the test would look like in the different stages. Next slide. This is just following the format of the, the slide deck that, uh, that, that I know you guys appreciate. And that is, uh, any recommendations. It is just recommended that we take advantage of these kinds of opportunities that help us better prepare for future required potential for a future requirement. And it is further recommended that we review our assessment practices after the Civics Pilot to improve on them so that we get even better next year if it becomes a, a requirement. Next slide. There are no budget implications. You know, there's always the possibility that, that once we, uh, start getting some traction with the, the Civics MCAS and learning more about it, that we, um, purchase, uh, materials for the Civics class, which, uh, would better support this kind of assessment. But at this point, there's no budget implications for this pilot or the Civics MCAS. Next slide. I don't see any potential policy implications a result of the Civics Pilot. Next slide. And that's it. And I will take any questions you might have. Just a quick update.
Thank you. And thank you for having those last few slides on the presentation that tied into the things that are under the school committee purview. That's really helpful. We can go around with questions. Elizabeth?
Yeah. Thanks so much for the presentation. It was, it's very interesting. And I did look through the materials. I looked at the sample test. And I also do remember when they thought they were going to have a history MCAS and then it all kind of fell apart and it's interesting to see how they rebuilt it this way. And I was just wondering, um, just so people know in general, um, first of all, it's great that Ms. Robichaud has agreed to do this. And I'm wondering if, so she, does she get any coaching in scoring it? Is there any way for her to give her, for her to give the state feedback or to reflect on how the process went? Is there, you know, what does it mean to be in a pilot? And what, what kinds of things do we maybe get out of it because we are doing it in those ways?
I don't think we get anything out of it except for the experience of giving the assessment and getting a feel for what it's really going to be like and contributing some data to the state that they have asked districts to do. But I don't believe, or I'm not aware of any opportunities for, um, providing feedback. There probably will be some kind of surveys that go out. I wouldn't be surprised. Because Ms. Robichaud has been added to kind of an email list where she gets materials and updates about this. They may ask for some feedback around it. Probably not, uh, coaching or anything beyond just the training that, that, um, that she's attended. She does have a manual, a test administrator manual, just like they, um, publish for the ELA math and science MCAS. There's one specifically for the Civics MCAS Pilot. So that's given her also just the kind of reinforcing the training she's had to, to be able to do the pilot.
Okay. Okay, great. And I was wondering, do you know what technology enhanced items are? I looked, I couldn't quite see. Do they mean the dropdown menus they have in part of it?
They, yeah, they, the technology enhanced items could be, sort, uh, take three character traits of this list of character traits and drag them over to the character that exhibited these traits and kids drag things over to little silhouettes of people or something. It could be dropdown menus. It's just basically, it's any question that's not a traditional ABCD multiple choice question. But that you actually sort of interact with your computer to answer.
Got it. Thank you.
Yep. And kids have been doing those for years on the, um, the normal MCASs. Yeah.
Mauro?
Is there, is this kind of the first time that in an MCAS that they're going to be doing like a group type of thing? Cause that's, that's really cool. They're doing that.
Yeah. And I can't tell yet if, if, if it says that the, the scores from the classroom assessment are not reported to DESI. And I can't tell if that's just because it's the pilot or if that's the plan. Corey, actually Ms. Robichaud and I were talking about that today. Something tells me that, so I get a feeling that's the plan when it becomes a requirement. That the teacher, that the purpose of that first part that's done in the classroom is sort of to activate some, some knowledge and to build some knowledge before the kids are, are sort of more accountable for the, the part that gets reported to the state. But Ms. Robichaud was under the impression that, that once the, the Civics MCAS becomes a requirement, if it does, that that local, um, locally scored part of the assessment may get reported to the state. So we have to do some further digging about that, but definitely for this pilot, that does not get reported to, uh, the state.
One else?
I have some question.
Oh, sorry.
Jever?
Okay, Mary?
So, um, thank you very much, Mike. I, I'm just so excited to have Civics as part of our curriculum. My questions were more about the curriculum itself. Did DESI actually create the curriculum that we're using for this pilot so that, um, Mrs. Robichaud has like a, a metric or is it sort of going by the seat of our pants?
No, it's, it's not going by the seat of our pants, but it's also, no, DESI didn't create the curriculum. Um, DESI creates the standards, the frameworks, which are the eighth grade history and social science, um, frameworks. And, uh, Ms. Robichaud uses a textbook and other materials, um, both digital and, and, uh, physical to, to teach her, uh, to teach her civics class.
Okay. All right. Thank you. And, um, I, I know that it's also up at the high school. So we've got the eighth grade, um, civics program and then it's up at the high school. Is the high school also, do you know if they're also doing this pilot?
I'm not aware.
We are not. We're not doing the MCAS Pilot. We are engaged in the Civics Action Project the state requires.
Okay. Thank you. And, um, so the, the three topics that were discussed, um, that we were, you know, we're, we're doing the institutions of US government are all three of those topics pieces that Mrs. Robichaud teaches as part of the, the curriculum?
Absolutely. Yeah. There's actually eight topics that it could be if it becomes, there's sort of eight topics in the history, social science framework. And any one of those three, I think it's topic one, topic three and topic five were identified by the state for this pilot, I guess. And they, you know, told us that we were selected for topic three institutions of US government.
Okay. Um, so how did we incorporate this into our social science? I mean, did we have to rework that because we, we had a program and now all of a sudden we had, cause I remember when Mrs., um, oh, up at the high school, um, Mrs. Dr. Off had done a presentation and she was talking about how we were going to potentially need like another half, another half, uh, half year or that to, to, to incorporate this, this new program. But how does, how did we do that with our current But how does, how did we do that with our current curriculum for socials? For social studies?
I'm so sorry, Mary, I don't understand the the question.
So it seemed as though, so we had a curriculum at the middle school for the social science. And then I think it was what, three years ago that civics came into?
Yes.
And so how did we we rework that so that?
Oh, oh, yeah, absolutely. We purchased textbooks for the, for Ms. Robichaud. And the teachers also met in, in, you know, vertical teams. So you're talking about Mr. Cotter, Ms. Robichaud and, you know, Ms. Junta at the time. And now the seventh grade teacher this year is Mr. Hales, but Ms. Junta at the time, you know, meeting. And that all had to kind of get remapped when civics went to eighth grade. And I was there for that work. That was, I think, in my first year here where that work happened. So we've, you know, she's had a couple of years now, a few solid years. Well, I know their pandemic sort of, but you know, a few solid years of teaching civics.
Great, thank you.
Yep, absolutely.
Natasha?
Thank you for sharing this. I was wondering about, one, I'm not a huge fan of standardized testing. And so adding another testing does, it's a home of the conversation, but you know, little bit uneasy with that, but so be it, it's not anything that we have any control over. The preparation for, I know traditional standardized testing, there is a level of prep. But given that this doesn't have any scoring impact to the district, it sounds like there's not going to be a real huge level of effort put into preparing like with the students per se, as you would traditionally do, correct?
Yeah, I mean, there's definitely that feel that the pressure's off. The results aren't being reported to, you know, school committees or to the public and and. But that being said, you know, Ms. Robichaud is is an extremely diligent teacher. Professional status has been that for many years. And, you know, she is, you know, giving this a lot of of effort. And, you know, I, in fact, I made a promise to to Ms. Robichaud that if, if this is a waste of time and meaning the state does not move forward with the, with making a real civics MCAS and this pilot was something we just did and it and it'll never happen again, I would buy her a twelve pack of beer in her favorite choice of of brands. So that's all I could give to her for that. But I'm the one who signed us up for it. I did consult with Ms. Robichaud, but but no, she's taking it very seriously. So, you know, but I don't think she's devoting class time to it and and things like that.
No, I think generally speaking, though, I think you touched on it, is that the level of effort a teacher puts into, you know, Ms. Robichaud, you know, wanting to have this executed with fidelity. You know, it is a level of stress, right? And so I just realizing it doesn't have a large impact to us directly. I, I'm glad that you've had that conversation of, you know, I guess let's try it and maybe not do it again. If there, you know, if the the resources commitment to it, you know, may have not felt very valued in the, in the outcome of whatever the, you know, the state, you know, does with the information. Because I, I wouldn't want our, our staff and our students to be, you know, kind of spinning their wheels on something that feels fruitless in 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 what they're doing. But I do appreciate the, the work and the integrity that she'll be bringing to the process in order to provide information with that. Is the timing of this going to be at the same time as other MCAS testing that?
Not for eighth grade. So when the kids do the, the, the classroom assessment, the forty five minute classroom assessment, the forty five minute state assessment that that are in April, those are done in a week where there's no other MCAS for eighth grade. So the eighth graders won't take any other MCAS that week. They're just doing those two with Ms. Robichaud. And then the end of course happens long after all the other MCASs have ended. It happens in June. I believe, I believe, I can't remember the day we picked, but it was, it's very, very late in the year with a couple of weeks left to go in the year. So, yeah.
Okay.
And, you know, I just want to say that every indication seems to be that the state is moving forward with this assessment to become a requirement. So if I had any indication that this was something that may not really happen, I probably wouldn't have signed up, signed us up for it. But, but I do believe it's, it's important to, to experience this when we're not on the hook for, for getting it right so that we have a little bit of a tailwind when we, when we have to get it right.
I appreciate that, like foresight in 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 doing that. I just generally speak in standardized tests and adding another one is just, you know, feels very unnecessary.
But. Into a grade that already has science as well.
Right, right, right.
Yeah, in eighth grade you have English and math and now it'd be civics two.
And science, yep.
And this is going to happen this, this eighth grade this year, right? And then, okay, so this is, there'll be introduced that to this year, so it'll be upcoming. And then those results, I guess, when do you get confirmation or when we, when do you find out? When it, it's going to happen for next year? I guess it'll, that's something that will be more relatively announced. Like, what is, what is, what is the pilot work? Like, so we, we do the testing and then what is there? Is there a different deliverable or summary that is provided to the, is there anything that's provided to the district afterwards? Or it's really just, we want your numbers and do this and that's it?
Yeah, there's no, there's no data on how we did. But I'm sure the state will release lots of public data just on how the pilot went and, you know, aggregate conclusions and such. So I would expect just sometime in the fall, we'll start to receive some updates about it. And, you know, chuckle, receive those same updates and we'll just stay tuned and see what's coming down the pike. But I'm sure it'll be announced in the, in the fall.
So do you expect there to be much lead time? Like, would it be announced in the fall to be a test that counts in the spring? Or would they give more time than that? And so you'd have at least another year?
I think they could possibly announce it in the fall and we would have to take it in the spring.
Okay.
Yeah.
How consistent was this test with the curriculum that she was previously teaching? So, like, how much would you expect to have to change things on the fly next year?
Yeah, nothing, the, the, she teaches civics and this is a civics MCAS that assesses the civic standard. So she, it's just exactly what she teaches, such things as institutions of US government like are, like we were selected for.
So when you mentioned about possible budget implications of textbooks or such things, those wouldn't be expected to be an enormous expense because it's consistent with what you're already doing?
Absolutely, absolutely, right? No new.
I just worry about an expense next year.
No. Oh, no, there would not be an expense next, next year in the mid, mid year.
Okay.
Yeah. She's got a great textbook.
Oh, thanks. And I didn't mean to step on Natasha when she's speaking. I just wanted to make sure, so I know what the MCAS is, the situation for eighth graders. They have English, math and science also in eighth grade in Maynard. So you have what earth science then?
You have the, all eighth graders in the state take ELA, they take math and they take science.
Two sessions in my district, sorry, in our district, we take the science MCAS in ninth grade. They take bio. But in Maynard, you guys take which science?
That's, that's different. The grade three through eight MCAS is for all third, fourth, fifth, sixth, seventh and eighth graders, no matter what. And for eighth graders, they all have to take ELA math and science. The high school tests are different and some districts can choose to do one ninth grade, tenth grade and that kind of stuff. But the three through eight is very cookie cutter.
Okay, well, that's a lot. I'm good, I know that's a lot on kids, I know it's a lot on admin, I know it's a lot on teachers. So wow, that's a lot. I hope that, I hope that they don't announce in the fall that you have to do that in the spring, have this additional new test. That's a lot. So I'm glad you're piloting it. I hope it is not as stressful as it could be.
Yeah, I don't think so, yeah.
Thank you for being proactive and taking this on and please convey thank yous to Ms. Robichard for taking this on when there's so many other things to be that she's handling and everyone is handling. And thank you for the presentation.
You got it.
Thank you.
Okay, the school improvement plan updates. Do you, are you start, do you want to start with a particular school?
Yeah, I think when you see the presentation, I think it will begin with Green Meadow and then work its way to Fowler and then ultimately the high school.
Thank you, Colleen. Thank you, Hillary, for having us tonight. And these are just an update of the three school improvement plans. All right, so Green Meadow Elementary School goals from twenty one to twenty two. We had four goals at the time. Goal one was the importance of social emotional learning. Goal two was to revise our current report card format. Goal three was to evaluate our early literacy strategies. And goal four was to evaluate and enhance services to our English learners. Next slide, Colleen. So the action steps for goal one of the importance of social emotional learning was we want to continue to strengthen the Green Meadow social emotional learning website with frequent updates, including resources for teachers, parents and students. That was done by our guidance counselors and they did an amazing job. The guidance counselors also were involved in continuing emailing SEL tips for parents and teachers on a regular basis. We had a staff buddies program where it was appropriate. Last year and part of this year, but mostly last year, we used Route one seventeen Green Meadow Bulletin Board to showcase a lot of SEL messages to the community. We purchased new children literature offerings. We have a center or an aspect of the library where with SEL components, they, they can occur and with some professional teaching literature with SEL themes. We do continue our successful lunch bunch program. And we increase time guidance counselor can model and co teach effective SEL lessons with classroom teachers. What has happened is our, our guidance counselor goes indirectly to the classrooms and they model and the teachers are there with them, so they co teach those lessons. And then at the time, it was a grant funded guidance counselor. We are so happy in order to have a, a, a third guidance counselor with us. And she has done a fantastic job and she works with the students, all the students. But she's been a great teammate to everybody else there. Second, next slide. Goal two, we had looked at revising our current report card format. We had talked about, we brought in a committee. At the time, it was Charles and I. And we brought forth several report cards, examples of report cards. We met with them, but we weren't in the area in order to make sure that it's going to be done correctly. We also knew that we were getting a new student information system coming in. So that is suspended into two thousand twenty two, twenty three. We'll again format and bring in a teachers and and parents in order to create a group. And then we look to buy next year, begin that idea of having a new current report or new report card system. Next slide. The, to evaluate early literacy strategies, everybody knows that we've been doing an awful lot of that. We spent the entire year on this last year and this year. So it's been two years in the making. We will continue with our lot of professional development next year. We brought in assessments, early bird dibbles eight in the DRA. We have developed data meetings with all of the teachers. We had just had our third data meeting this, in the last several weeks. We will also have a fourth one in late May, early June. And then we are continuing with extensive professional development. We've done small instructional groups and creating classroom libraries. And goal four. I want to give you an understanding and evaluate and enhance our service to our L learners. The numbers at GMS, as it is with all areas of the mained public schools, the L learners, the population is growing. This is gives you some understanding of this currently forty three students that are in the GMS area. Kindergarten has fifteen of those students. Grade one is seven, grade two is nine and grade three is twelve. And it continues to look that we will be growing as we go. The language backed breakdown, twenty of our students speak Portuguese, eighteen do speak Spanish. We have a variety of other languages, Hindi, Vietnamese, Turkish, Arabic and Burmese. And to continue with that is we are looking at how our assessments that we're giving, how they can be used for our English learners. We have an upcoming meeting with our L teacher, Dom Nguyen, who does a fantastic job to go over all the L students and how they're doing well. As we well know, Dom also gives the reading exam to all of our students. We are always trying to find out ways to increase parental involvement. I know that's not only a green medal goal, that's a district goal along there. And we are looking at how we can increase the L library for remediation. So many of the students come to, are pulled out with getting that extra assistance in learning English. And we're trying to make sure that we have enough materials for them as they begin their lessons at their levels and at their reading levels as they just come in. And many of them are just coming into the United States for the first time. That goes on and I introduce Mr. Barth.
Thank you, Rob.
You're welcome, Mike.
All right, so Fowler has three primary goals this year. One is, is really around our MTSS team and really building a data culture in our school. So it's about creating systems for gathering and sharing data among staff. And our goal, our second goal is our literacy pilot, which I know you, you probably have, have heard a lot about this year. And it's really, really kind of defined this school year, at least for me, is this literacy pilot. And, and then our third goal is around creating a space in the school for, for lower income students or students of need to obtain resources such as clothing and supplies. So I'd like to give you an update on each of those three goals tonight. Next slide. Our first goal has two slides because our action steps take up two pages here. So this is that first goal around the building data culture. And so one of our, one of our big, one of the most exciting pieces of this to me is that we have a assessment, an assessment calendar that will be published on the Fowler site for anyone to look at and review. It's, it's almost ready. It will be published by the end of this year. And what that assessment calendar will show the public and our staff and our students is what assessments students take in each grade, what those assessments are actually mining for or what the, what data they are trying to, to, to get. And what happens when a student scores, you know, at the green level on that assessment or the yellow level, you know, sort of the, the, the maybe needs improvement level or the, the red level on that assessment? And what other assessments may be needed depending on how that student does? And I just feel like that's something that's been missing at Fowler since I've been there is a really like a, a document that we can all hang our hat on that says, here's what we assess. Here's why we assess it. Here's what we get from the assessments and here's what happens when a student is at, you know, meeting or needs improvement or, or, or far from, far from, far from meeting. And, and that to me is just a very exciting thing. So I wish I could share it tonight. I can't, but, but it will be published by the end of the year. Other steps are, you know, earlier in the year, just identifying what, what are the assessments that we have? Administering the dibbles in days that we, we create a database where the teacher's data is. And that has been, has been created and teachers look at that and study that and see students again, sort of at a green, yellow, red level and can see those colors change as students take, you know, take maybe the. Take, you know, take maybe the, they may have taken the fall assessment, now they're taking the winter one and you can see their growth. That we start to use data protocols. With our grade level teams at common planning times. So, you know, protocol is sort of just a, a little bit of a frame to keep a meeting running on time. And so things don't drag on. So, you know, so and so maybe each person talks. About what they've noticed for two minutes and, you know, there's a timer and then the next question is. So what are some strategies that you could try or, you know, things like that? So kind of utilizing data protocols so that we're not always just spinning our wheels and wondering what to do. But having, having actual real outcomes of our data meetings. Next slide. And again, just. Then responding to the data. Our two M T S S teachers, Meg Sullivan and Lauren Junta have just done a phenomenal job of, of. Going around to C P Ts this year, implementing these data protocols, implementing then interventions. That so they're, you know, we're pulling students for interventions in math and in reading and writing. So this is all happening. With just tremendous success, success at Fowler. By the end of this month, they will, you know, share different successes. At a faculty meeting or possibly in that early April, early release day. And, and then, you know, kind of looking at the end of the year, just. Setting up our system for next year so that we're ready to go right there in the fall. So again, I just can't sing the praises of Meg and Lauren enough this year and the work that they've done with our staff. And our staff have really started to take ownership of the data. And have expressed a greater comfort level with sort of how to look at the data and what to do about it. Next slide. Our second goal is to pilot. Some programs for literacy. And with great success, we have piloted two main programs this year. And, you know, we used Ed Reports and the curate website, which is the state's version of Ed Reports. To make our selections for what to pilot. We have had numerous meetings and working sessions to evaluate how things are going. And also just to give out materials and give people time to, to, to look at them and plan. We have worked at the, with the business office to, on, on what this may look like when it's actually time to purchase. Next slide. We have, of course, piloted the materials, we've evaluated them. We've actually used the rating tools provided by Novak Consulting and Ed Reports. The one in particular by Novak Consulting was very helpful because we were able to make it into a Google form. And teachers were able to go on and, and, and rate how they felt the curriculum was. And, and you know, it's, it's, it's one thing to say, how is something right? And somebody might say, well, I don't like it. Well, you know, why don't you like it? And you have to really press or why do you like it more important? So the questions are very targeted around diversity and. And, you know, rigor and organization of the program and all of that. Is it usable? Is it, is it, is it fairly easy to, to, to kind of navigate? And now we're in the process of meeting and identifying which materials we're recommended. Which we are recommending to, to Brian. And, you know, it's, it's been, it's been wonderful just to see because our, the first one that we did, wit and wisdom. Was a resounding negative response to that. And, and this second program, the amplify program, which is. Called Core Knowledge Language Arts or C K L A for, for the English classrooms. And it's called Camino's for the Spanish immersion classrooms. Has just gotten a tremendous thumbs up from, from, from the teams. Very, very highly recommended. So that's what we will be recommending. And, you know, we're going to hopefully be able to adopt these materials in the next school year. And also we'll be doing some work with our, our sixth through eighth grade teams next year. Around new curricular programs as well for literacy. So the goal is that we come out of this with grades four through eight. Comprehensive literacy program in both reading and writing. And we have already started talking about. A presentation, that last bullet there, presentation to the public. For any member of the public to come and talk to us and hear what we've been working on and ask questions. So we're, we're currently planning that for, I believe, the month of April. Next slide. Our third goal is, is to provide an outpost, it's been called, or a necessities closet. And Dr. Imperato and the counselors have been working on that this year. So they've been setting it up. It's taken quite a bit of work just to even find a space and to clear out the space and then to get the donations and to get it organized and to, to make sure it's ready. So it's not quite yet open for, for, for students, but will be very soon. So that would be kind of an update on our third goal. And now I'll hand it off to Mr. Karjanis.
Thank you, Mike, and thank you, Rob. The high school also had four goals going into this year. Was to expand our social emotional learning opportunities and social connections for our students. Creation of additional academic supports to close learning gaps. Expansion of our English learner services and Aspen training for our staff. The next slide is on the importance of social emotional learning. We do update parents frequently electronically and we do send out in home languages. To our families. We've expanded our counseling services. We now have three guidance counselors, we also have outside counseling agency come in to work with some of our students. We've offered multiple student activities and supports. Designed to enhance students' connections to peers and adults. These include our advisories that we hold weekly. Our clubs and sports are all up and operational again. Our Oasis program is a tier three emotional support for some of our students that need it. We even have therapy dogs coming in free of charge on a, on a regular schedule. Things like Spirit Week are being held. Our guidance counselors this year, for the first time in a long, long time. Are going into classrooms on a quarterly basis. And then following up with a parent meeting on quarterly basis. Around subs, around topics like substance abuse or preventing self harm. So we've identified. Critical areas that counselors are directly reaching out to students regarding. Additional academic supports that we've created. We do have a homework club and Saturday school that now allow for in year credit recovery. This has started within the last few weeks. Our first semester closed in late January. We've identified students who did not do as well as they may, they or we might have hoped. And we have had guidance counselors meeting with those students. And contacting their families about opportunities for them to come to school on Saturdays. To raise their grades for the first semester and get themselves back on track to pass for this year. Last year, we did create an in-house summer school program for credit recovery. Maynard hasn't had an in-house summer school program in at least 15 years. So this. Allowed students to earn credit back. In the past, their options were to take the class again the following year, starting in September. Or to seek out a summer school program outside of Maynard. The closest one was Acton, Boxborough. Those summer school courses outside of the district were typically 350. Of course, plus the student had to provide transportation to a town outside of Maynard. So now we've created a program where they can do that in-house. We've also created a summer enrichment program, which we're going to continue this year. Where, where students are in a camp type of environment. They do fun activities, it could be bridge building or art or. Could be theater, but they're all with academic purpose as well. If a student builds a rocket, they'll be talking about basic concepts and aerodynamics. Basic equations and physics like force equations. But they get to build a rocket and launch it and have fun as well. Also, our Oasis program provides tier three support for daily academic. Help for students who are struggling as well. The next slide, the expansion of our E L services. This year, we increased our teaching allotment to point six F T Es. For E L students and we were planning to create some summer learning opportunities. I did put in a note that at the beginning of the school year, we had seven E L students. And looking at their we to scores, it really looked like point six F T Es would be sufficient. As of yesterday, we are now up to 19 E L students. So there's been a tremendous growth over the course of the year. And as the student numbers have gone up, we have also been shifting F T Es back to the high school. Unfortunately, it's kind of coming out of the green meadow. So I think system wide, we need to look at additional E L teachers and F T Es. But we are up to 19 students now. Of these 10 are Portuguese speakers for their home language, six are native Spanish speakers. We have a Bulgarian speaker, a Farsi speaker and a Tagalog speaker. Their we to scores, two, two of the 19 are at level four, which is a pretty functional academic level. Eight are at level three, which is a conversational level, but those students would really struggle with more formal academic language. Level two students are just beginning to become conversational. And seven of our students are at level one, which means minimal English language proficiency or even no English language proficiency when they begin with us. So obviously there's a range there with, with a really significant chunk of the students. Not at an academic level of language yet, though I think the level threes, we will see moving up to level four. And the other levels moving up as they have instruction through the year. Finally, Aspen training for staff. We had staff, actually it was all three buildings came in over the summer. Sort of a train the trainer model and at the high school, Reed Murphy key was, was the person who did that for us. Very early before students even arrived, she did training with our staff so that they. Understood how to set up the system, take attendance, get their grade books set up so they were ready to go when students arrived. Later in September and into October, further training for staff was done. So that they knew how to submit their grades. Do things like report cards and midterm reports. Also, they could see how to use the document upload feature. We, we've been loading in our 504 and I E P plans, for example, now, so, so our staff can access them directly through Aspen. And there is a communication function in Aspen where teachers can email out. So they're not flipping between screens, they can, if they're communicating regarding information in Aspen, it's, it's much easier for them to just use Aspen to then send the message out. Scheduling system training began in October, it's been extending through the whole year. The principals, Mike and myself were in yet another training schedule, scheduled training today. As we get ready to do a schedule build along with other select staff members. And there are weekly troubleshooting meetings throughout the school year. With the principals and M H S staff along with Adam Steiner. So that we make sure that the, the Aspen rollout continues to go smoothly. At our school council meeting today, our student representatives on the school council indicated that they find Aspen easy to use to track their grades. The parents on the council mentioned that they, they found it an easy system to use. So we're pretty pleased with how the Aspen rollout's been going thus far. And finally, a quick look ahead, I was also speaking with the school council about this, this afternoon as well. Next year, we, we really do think we're going to need to continue with us. Additional social emotional support for our students and continue to help them get reconnected to schools. I suspect this is going to be something that's in place. For, for year or years beyond next year as well. We're going to also continue to refine and expand academic supports to close learning gaps. Again, I think COVID, the learning gaps are something we're going to be dealing with with several more years to come. We are going to continue to expand our E L services. We anticipate having a full-time teacher right from the get-go next year. And we will have the, we will have a summer E L. Program in place this summer, a two week sort of camp. For E L students in late June and early July to help with. Help prevent learning loss that is typically seen with all students, but particularly E L students. And we're going, going to also be urging our E L students to enroll in our enrichment program later in the summer. So it'd sort of be some, two additional weeks, a bit of a vacation, hopefully two more weeks of the, of the enrichment program. Couple week vacation and then beginning the next academic year. Again, to help students who are learning English with formal skills, conversational skills and to prevent learning loss. And finally, a fourth goal is to define the requirements for additional student pathways. And to develop implementation plans for those pathways. Just to expand on that a bit. We have our W A V M chapter 74 program as an example. Students know that if they complete the requisite courses and internship hours. It results in a chapter 74 certificate when they graduate along with their high school diploma. We've come to realize that we're getting into position with computer science classes. With world culture and languages and particularly in biology. Where if we looked at our existing, our existing programs and started codifying some things. That we would be able to create pathways where similar to W A V M, if a student. Completed a requisite group of courses, they'd be awarded what would be a school certificate. In that pathway and we could explore also having that included on their transcripts. So we really want to expand the pathways beyond W A V M. And I would say the candidates that we're looking at again are, that we're in position to do that for right now are computer sciences. Biology and world culture and language. And that concludes the update on school improvement plans for the three buildings and thank you for your time.
Thank you all for coming and presenting, we really appreciate it. This was really exciting to hear about all these goals and the progress that's been made towards them. Do people want to go around and have questions? Does anyone want to start? Mary?
Sarah, if you want, so thank you all very, very much. I really, there was pieces of every one of the schools that was very exciting. Fowler School, the, the calendar that you're putting out, Mike, I, anytime that we can institutionalize things like that. So that no matter who the players that you've heard before, but that's, that's what helps us move, you know, have the accountability and scheduling and that. So I really appreciate, appreciate that. And also the high school, you know, thinking in terms of continuing with the, with the pathways anyway, that anytime that we can do that. I, I understand that. I I understand that we have lost a lot as far as the learning gaps and that go, but. There are those students that we that are are succeeding, that are excelling still. And so anytime that we can be um incorporating that into our our learning, I greatly appreciate it. But you know, Mike, you had said, you know, a rigorous um literacy program. That to me says we're going to be hitting the kids that, you know, all across the the gamut. And that, so I really appreciate that.
Thank you, and 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 you can't even believe what Rob and Karen are planning for literacy down there at Green Meadow. So we're gonna get them young and we're gonna have really strong writers and readers coming up to Fowler.
Excellent.
Natasha, but she's muted.
Hi, thank you very much for all the information. Um. Um. For the Green Meadow in um. I wanted to get a better understanding of what. I was looking at some of the action um steps that were under the goals and wanted to get a. I felt like there was just like um which ones could have been which ones were completed, which ones were in progress. I couldn't really grasp the sense. Uh, of that. And I wanted to go back to those for a moment. In particular, under the ones for the importance of social emotional learning. Um, so the continued success of the lunch bunch program, that's something that I know Green Meadow has done for years, right? So is there something that's different or changing about the lunch bunch program?
No, I I can't, I can't. Yeah, I can't Natasha, I can't really say that it's changed. Okay, I mean. When I met with them last year, obviously my first year in, that was one of the areas that they wanted to make sure with the COVID going on. And the amount of students we only had in last year up to, you know, fifty to seventy-five percent. This year they wanted to make sure they continue with that lunch bunch and particularly have students. That it was necessary so when they came back, those kids who might have been um. Online and virtual, they included them, they weren't maybe involved before. So that's how they were able to increase some of that this year.
Okay. Um, and there there's a encourage staff about the expanded. Staff buddies program where appropriate. Can you speak to that a little bit more? I'm not really familiar with that. I'd like to hear about how we're supporting the staff's social emotional.
So so part of that is the idea, so staff buddies is the area of. We number one, we had a lot of new staff members. We also knew that a lot of staff members were coming back. Um, for some people it was very emotional coming returning and everything. So working directly with the guidance counselors, again, not not through me or anything like that. So it's very opportunity for them to be um. Not not in the open about certain things. So they were able to go to the guidance counselors, the guidance counselors were able to have counseling sessions and also set them up with other people. That they that they had the like issues and they could have those kind of conversations directly with our professors.
Some like camaraderie or just.
Exactly, Natasha. We just thought it was with everything that went on, we just thought it was an opportunity for them to um. Bond together and and again, not not openly, you know, I may not come out with anything, but it it on their own and their own levels and whatever they needed.
Um, no, that 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 helps understand a little bit more. We don't always talk a lot about the students, but I it's really, I think it's really important to recognize that, you know, a lot of these transitions. Are also um challenging for 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 staff as they've gone through. So I appreciate the focus there. The um revised report card, I was looking at the information about looking at. Neighboring districts, especially especially those with high performing and strong community support. Can you give me a little bit more understanding? I guess. My um, and I I guess this is probably why when the budget subcommittee, we talk about uh benchmark communities. Um, and this come up more recently because sometimes higher um. Communities that have more higher scores, they also have the ability to fund more right in support of what they're achieving either. Through parents, you know, the 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 level of what parents put in on tutoring or whatever, or the local aid that their town can attribute. So I wonder if it's helpful to think about when we do comparisons. Um, and this might be also a conversation for Brian, that we're looking at those benchmarking communities like Milis that are assist. That are demographically similar as well, not just high performing, but also um. More structured in a similar way um to kind of better, not just looking at, because output is. You know, if we look at an output of Weston, you know, yes, it'd be great to do that. They also have different resource abilities and capabilities than what, you know, Maynard can do. So I just wonder if it's more um appropriate to look at the districts that are similar to us and our benchmarking um thinking ahead. Um, for that.
So Natasha, for our benchmarks are actually for our reports. This is more of a a report cards, you know, for the parents. We had gathered, Charles and I had gathered um maybe eight, ten different report cards last year. We brought together our our committee members. Um, we gave it to different staff members to kind of take a look at it. Um, at the end, knowing again that we had a new student information system coming in, trying to figure that out and everything. We thought it would be best to um just keep that on hold for another year um as we move forward. And then we will do the same thing. I mean, there is a. There's a push in order to, we're at trimesters right now. There's a, there's even a push to uh redo that a little bit and talk about that. Um, but a lot of this is preliminary, so. Um, we we knew we weren't going to do it justice this year and that's and that's the honest reason. I didn't want to start it and not and not do a good job.
No, thank you for clarifying that. And um, the literacy, because I it looks like, you know, you and Fowler understandably both have that as as a goal. Um, which is really great to see what I um. I know in our last, our our presentation, we had the school committee. Uh, there was a couple of different pieces that were outstanding that we were hoping to get follow-up on, which was the data about the pilots.
Yep.
Um, and I look forward to when that might be crossing our our radar. Um, and then also surveys that went out to the staff. Um, I think there was, like, I know you mentioned that Fowler in particular that was, I'm thinking maybe it was also at Green Meadow. There was some soliciting of feedback from the staff on the usability of certain um curriculum. Um, I'd like to see what that feedback was. And I guess the the when I think about the the data piece. Um, because I I want to see data. I really would love to see more data about how these decisions happening. Um, I would like to make sure the focus on whatever we're choosing is on student outcome. And not only the ease of what teachers like. And and I just want to make sure that's that whenever we're we're committing or when we're talking about it, it's. Level of outcome for student achievement is really the the area of focus. And how if if our staff need professional development or whatever it is we're choosing in order to use something that has a better outcome for our students. Want to make sure that's how we're leading into the conversation versus leading into it as. Ease of staffing use.
Right.
And you know, that makes any sense.
It does. So um, so like Mike, we have just pretty much just finished up our our areas that we needed to study. And like Mike, the original wit and wisdom um did not, was not successful for a variety of reasons. And some of that was, and we have all the, we have all the information for you now for that.
Right.
But some of that was when you really look deeply at at some of the readings that were in that. In those booklets, it wasn't, it did not meet areas of our diversity, it did not meet equitability. It it really did not score very well. Um, then for us, assessment has been the largest part of change for us. So um, it was Jeff Ferrante last year, preliminary brought in early bird to our kindergarten. This year, under Karen Lindquist, we've really used that early bird as an opportunity for assessment in our kindergarten. And then we moved it towards our first grade. It gives an awful lot of information for subtests, for different areas that we can then have conversations with teachers. About instruction, about curriculum and what the students need. Um, and then the second one is the DIBELS eight. We moved from the DIBELS next to the DIBELS eight. It was a recommendation under the um of the assessments. Um, and that too gives us a lot of preliminary. And finally, we're using our DRAs. As far as giving information there too. We just finished up our. Um, October, sorry. Um, our March assessment for DRAs in DIBELS. So we now have that assessments and I just finished up going through it. And making marks and making understanding it. And then we just had a data meetings with our team. So now we're ready to respond and give you guys an overview of that information. So I will say, and much like Mike, everything we've done this year is based on the data, based on that information. And then going back and talking to our teachers about how and and what we're going to use and how we're going to change and for our students. Uh, we've seen some good, some good growth, not to say that we we sell more to go, but we've seen some good growth.
Right. So it sounds like just to recap, um, we will, you you are the data, we will expect to to have that.
Very shortly.
The feedback from the from the staff and that um, and then we will get a subsequent. Um, I guess presentation of what that will be, looks like, what we've learned from these pilots. And I think the other part too was, um, there was supposed to be a presentation to the staff and I saw that, Mike, you had put in there about community. Um, outreach. I just want to confirm that that is a definite and.
It is.
And when, when is that looking?
April thirteenth.
April thirteenth. Is that gonna be for both school? I guess it's gonna be.
We're gonna do it, we're gonna do it together.
Awesome. Okay.
Let's hold off the press.
Yes, it is.
You're the person to know Natasha.
Woo, a very secret meeting we're having right now, by the way. Um, April, all right, terrific.
And the other thing Natasha, I would like to say is that. Mike has been in in throughout this is it's been a a very collegial between the elementary school and the middle school. And I think that's one of the goals, one of the things, it's not a, it's not a goal of ours. It should be a given. It's what we're looking forward to do. And throughout this whole process, um, everybody from the literacy committees have been together. They've come down to us, we've gone up to them. We've had great conversations. So I think we're moving in the right direction.
And that's honestly fantastic, because I know for years there has not been really good building to building alignment. And um, I think, thank you for for working so hard to ensuring that is. You're creating that that channel um as it needs to be in support of our students. So um, I look forward to to that. And then um, one more and then I'll pass along um. The um, and this is actually for the um, high school. Uh, Chuck, thank you very much for all the information. And it's really to see all the the EL services and supports that um. Really starting at K all the way up. Um, how they've expanded and how the needs have grown is is pretty um. Mind mind blowing and all the different languages that we, you know, as a small district that we need to support for our our students. So. Uh, thank you for for um delineating all of them in such a, it's a great way at at the different um levels. Um, the, as you've heard, there was feedback about the the summer, there were the credit recovery. Um, I know last year um, there was the credit recovery that was part of. It was, I guess it was the first one in July or June, there was a week there. That was that really the first time that we did it in-house? Because I, that was, I just want to, I thought I, you mentioned about it not happening in-house. And I recall last year that we did have some effort there.
Last year was the first time we offered summer school in-house since I've been principal and. I understand for several years before that. Uh, so it was the entire month of July was summer school last year. Um, we had ten students um enroll. And uh, those ten students took sixteen classes. Uh, we had two sessions each day, a little less than two hours per session. It was a four-hour day. Um, so those ten students took sixteen classes, they passed all sixteen. Uh, they signed a contract when they sign up for summer school. It had a very rigorous attendance requirement. Uh, we also stressed that it wasn't a seat time program that they had to actually make progress on work. Um, and it resulted in them receiving a passing grade. Uh, some of the EL students who did the summer school component also then registered for the um. Enrichment program, two of the students registered for the enrichment program. And for those students, and we did this spontaneously when we realized we had the opportunity. They spent uh half of the session during the enrichment portion, taking a third class for credit recovery. And then the second half of the uh day, they were in the groups that we had working. Uh, in the enrichment program, so they were interacting with their peers. So some of our EL students actually recovered credits for three classes uh over the course of the summer. Um, so that was uh very successful.
No, that's great. And I just want to highlight something you just said. So the credit recovery and the enrichment were both um well attended. And successful in the outcomes that they, the result in passing the classes they took. All without a financial commitment from the families, correct?
Uh, no, the students in summer school were charged a hundred dollars per class. We were very liberal waiving the fee in the event of hardship. The thinking behind it, and I'm going to be quite honest here.
Yep.
Is uh that having some skin in the game, to use the vernacular, kind of ups the um. Students not saying, ah, what the heck, I'm just not going to go in today. Um, and also, uh, I think that um. It just kind of raised the seriousness level. I I also think that if there were no fee at all, a number of students would be registered probably by their parents. Uh, who were not motivated to be there and there would be nothing at stake. Um, I'm certainly open to revisiting this thought process. I'm even open to visiting, um, maintaining the fee structure. And when a student actually passes the class at the end of summer, um refunding the hundred dollars. Um, but again, uh, if you think about it. We use uh a software called Edgenuity with many of our summer classes, not all of them. Our English and uh math classes are done uh without a software package. But um, the Edgenuity cla- the Edgenuity fee is a hundred dollars. The program is highly subsidized by the district. The amount of money we recovered last year in tuition, if you want to view it that way. Was probably on the order of one-tenth of the actual cost of the program. So it's a highly subsidized program. I'm certainly willing to look at the fee structure. But I don't want unmotivated students whose parents are coercing them to come to summer school. To not arrive with seriousness of purpose on day one.
Okay, so maybe um how it was executed, maybe how it was presented to the school committee may have been a little different than. Um, because I don't think we were under the impression that it was a fee associated with those summer programs, but. I I I am highly troubled that the fee would be in, looking at our retention rate and our graduation rates and who the communities that they. Impact um imposing a fee there. So I uh would strongly encourage that to be revisited. Um, if by all means.
The fee was waived for all students on free and reduced lunch, for example.
Right, right. I I heard that part. I just am more also thinking that adding a roadblock to anyone who is. Um, opportunity to recover credits to graduate is something um seems very arbitrary. Uh, skin in the game. I I don't like that anecdote, to be honest with you, because um I think after COVID in particular. Uh, it makes certain assumptions that maybe there are other factors that might not be heavily considered. It's a different type of environment where they're coming out of. Um, and I just, it feels like it's assuming that there wasn't a best effort. Um, by by a student. So that's just my two cents on 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 that matter there. But thank you very much for clarifying, Chuck, and I appreciate the the information about the goals um that you provided.
Thank you.
Um, does anyone else have questions, Elizabeth?
Um, I'm not sure exactly who can um answer this. I have a general question just about about the improvement plans in general. Um, first of all, are they year-long plans at this point?
Yes.
Yes.
So each, all of the things we're looking at are things that you.
Yes.
Started this year and ended the other.
Yes. Yes.
Okay. And then, and then as far as what happens at the end of the year for you with these plans, how do you evaluate their effectiveness? And how well you've done. Do I understand the context?
I can talk about that. Um, you know, um, there's some times when. The goal may continue for another year or maybe a three year type of goal.
Yeah.
And so it just depends. Um, but we circle up with the school council. And, uh, just decide on, on what goals we're gonna have. And obviously I, I propose what goals I think we should have. And, and, uh, listen to, listen to the conversation. But it's something that, you know, current, for these, these goals here that we have, they're really kind of one year goals. So we'll, at the, for next year, we'll. We'll have, you know, possibly different goals or evolutions of those goals.
Okay. All right. So every, so you're saying that the, if I understand the process from your end, it's you, you sit with the councils, um, you propose goals at the beginning of the year. You kind of discuss those goals and work on them throughout the year in those meetings. And at the end of the year, is there some kind of culmination of that? Or is it just come back around that in the fall of the next year?
Um, I guess I would say it's more of the latter, Elizabeth.
Okay, gotcha. Okay. Thank you for clarifying that. Um, and thanks for, I think you guys did a really great job of, um, of making clear. You know, what your struggles are at this point in our crazy time, um, that there, that you, we do have social emotional needs to the kids. Um, and that there, we do have more EL need than we've had in the past. Um, and it is what I've heard, um, from all of you. And it sounds like, um, you're all trying very hard to make sure you're meeting student, various student needs. Um, and then pushing them forward with things like the pathways, um, which all sound great. I, I, I guess my more specific questions for each cla, for each school, I wrote them down, give me one second. I, I, uh, uh, potentially nippy question for the, for Green Meadow is. I was, I saw you referenced in the, that there was a slideshow for the school committee, but I don't remember that slideshow and I was wondering what you're referring to. And I know that that's kind of nitty gritty.
We already, we presented, um, the literacy update. Yeah.
It wasn't the, it was under the other goal. Um, it was under.
SEL.
Um, yeah, it was under SEL.
Oh, I'm sorry. The, um, the guidance department had created and did a presentation to the school committee. Last year.
Last, okay, so that was last year.
In two thousand twenty-two, yeah, yeah.
Okay. Um, and, uh, the other question I had, I looked at, I couldn't find the website that you referred to in the SEL. I found, I looked up SEL at Green Meadow and I found a website that referred to, um, the way we used to do the golden spatula. Um, stuff, but I, but it didn't seem to be updated for a while. Is that the one you're talking?
I'll go back, I'll go back Elizabeth, but yes, um, I know that, um, our, uh, guides counselor Julie Danforth. Puts on, um, some things, but I'll go back and, and check.
Okay, and I, I know it sounds like.
It's okay, it's all right.
But is that, is that something that, like, what are you envisioning for that website?
We, we act, we are continuing to be that it's gonna be tips for parents, you know, for that part of that website. She also sends out tips to staff members, um, on a weekly basis. Uh, she puts that out through email. To all of our staff members, um, for there. And every now and then she'll throw, just give me some things that I put out into the smores. Um, packet that she needs for that. So she's been pretty diligent about it, but I'll go back to the website.
Okay, thank you. Um, and then I loved, I loved the part where you said, so you're, you're working on trying to get a parent advisory group, uh, together of, of old parents? Um, that's, that sounds great. How, how are you doing?
It's been, it's been, it's one of those areas that in the district also, um, it's very difficult to be honest with you. And, um, and part of that is gonna be language based. The, the members of the community have to feel that it's safe. They have to feel that they can communicate. And sometimes with a variety of languages we have, we do not necessarily have the staff members that can also do that. So, um, I know each of us have found multiple ways in order to translate and do, and be able to do that. I know Charles, um, last year brought in and, and we did do something at the end of the year for our L students where we. And parents, which we had an ice cream party for them. But in order to really get them more involved, uh, we as a district have to find. Another way. I know Charles is very involved and he can speak to it a little bit more if you wish.
If you would like to, yeah, I'd love to hear.
Sure. We're very excited about this. Um, one of the ways we've been getting, um, parents in is through social kinds of things. Ice cream social last year was very successful. Parents seemed very willing to come to school. They'll meet with each other, they'll talk. This year we are planning, um, uh, district wide with the high school to have an international night. We're doing that in, uh, in conjunction with the world, a language department and the EL department. And our hope is, um, when we get to, um, to talk to parents and see if we can, um, get people to come to meetings. So that we can actually form a pack. Right now, when we don't have to, but very shortly, we're going to, uh, be required by law to have one. If you have five percent of your total students, uh, EL, we are right there now. Um. As of this week, we are like four point nine nine percent, I think. So we're, you know, it's something that is, uh, um, it's an issue with us. And we also have, are getting some help from, uh, from the state, from some of the, uh, things that are posted on the, um, website on. Uh, on ways where other districts haven't been successful. It's get, um, getting parents to come in and to be, um, to be part of. Uh, of, of the parent advisory council. It's very, very important to us and it's a work in progress.
Great, thank you. That's very, it's very good here. Thank you very much for all that information. And, and thank you Rob for clarifying those things too. Um, and then for Fowler, my, my question is about, so the assessment calendar sounds really great. Um, and I was, I was wondering if you could just speak Mike to which assessments you're thinking of, I assume MCAS. Are you also thinking things like the, the Dibbles and the days that you mentioned? Um, and are you getting, are you getting down to levels of like, this is a big social studies test in the seventh grade and you, you should know that that's coming up to that.
Those are listed more as, um, end of, as a general end of unit assessment. So the big, you know, chapter thirteen social studies test that might happen, you know, next week or something. Would be just mentioned as an end of unit assessment. And, um, and so those are just mentioned more generally. But yep, the Dibbles, the days, the star benchmark, the, um, IXL diagnostic, we put MCAS on there. Um, like I said, end of unit assessments, we have access on there. Um, probably a couple that I'm, I'm sure I'm missing.
Okay.
Uh, Ice Station we use for Spanish immersion. Um, so, yeah.
Fantastic. Thank you for that. Um, and I love, I love the, the necessities closet sounds great. It also sounds like a lot of work. So good on you guys for taking that on. And, um, if you want to, if you would like to speak more about how you're thinking about how that's gonna run. Once it's up, it's up and running, I'm, you know, I'm curious about, that sounds like a lot of logistical work. So if you want to speak to that a little, that'd be.
Well, it, that kind of stuff always funnels through the guidance counselors and they are just so phenomenal, knowing every single kid. In their grades that they are in charge of. So the way our arrangement works at Fowler is, um. They, they alternate, uh, the best way I can explain it, I'm sure there's a better way, is to literally tell you what they do. So Brenna Cotter this year, um, supports grades four, six and eight. And Valerie Roth supports grades five and seven. Next year they'll flip flop. So Brenna will support fifth and seventh grade and Valerie will support fourth, sixth and eighth. What that means is as the students progress through Fowler, they have the same counselor, right?
Yep.
So if Brenna has fourth grade this year, next year she'll have fifth grade and then the next year she'll have sixth grade. So she stays with the kids. So they know them so well. And as they notice students that may have needs. What also happens often is a teacher will reach out and say, I've noticed the student, it's, you know, um. In fact, this is, this is a very recent example. We noticed a student when it was very, very cold who wore flip flops to school. And, you know, so sometimes it just, we notice things and we, we talk to the student, obviously super privately. And ask if the student would like to go in and pick out a pair of shoes. And, um, and if not. Uh, if there aren't shoes there that happen to fit that student, in that case, we would get online and, and, you know, somebody always ponies up and buys a pair of shoes. You know, it's just the way it works. So.
And are you, how are you going to keep funding it, do you think?
Uh, we're gonna, we're gonna keep getting donations.
Okay.
Yep.
Wow. Well, thank you for explaining that. Sounds fantastic. Thank you.
Yeah, great. Thank you. But I mean, I'd love to share more information once we really get it up and running, some pictures that we could put in our newsletter. And some more information about it. So families are aware that it exists. So I'll talk to the counselors about that. Thank you.
Um, and the high school, um, I'm, I think I'm really excited Chuck to hear about the, the pathways coming up. Uh, and, um, especially, you know, it sounds like what you're thinking about as the Spanish immersion kids come up to ninth grade, you're thinking about how to make sure that there's a pathway. That honors that we have this program that almost nobody else has. Is that, is that what you were thinking with the world language?
That's, that's part of it, yes. Um, I also know that Jen Adams has worked really hard to create partnerships. With sister schools in different countries around the world. We're actually exploring a partnership with the school in Germany now, uh, as well. Um, so I think we're trying to create affordable travel opportunities as well as language growth. But also perhaps tying it in with electives that students might take in history or art. To have a true sort of, uh, world orientation, um, to that pathway. And, uh, right now it feels like the pieces are all in place at the high school. They just haven't been assembled in a way that would. You know, that you could lay out for parents and students and say, you know, here is a pathway. Uh, and if you complete these steps, that we'll be able to present you with a certification, um, that you've, you know, you've, you've reached this level. More broadly speaking, even beyond language.
Wow, that's great. And, and that, and then bio and computer science, both of those are so, they're, I'm, I'm really excited about all of those. So thank you for. The pathways. Um, I, I, I'm, I'm so, so thank you for that. Uh, I'm glad that you're having this summer program for the EL students. Um, it sounds like we have more work to do. If I heard you right, you said you have to sometimes pull from the green meadow. And so it sounds like we, we have some work that we have to think about as a district now that our, our needs are changing. So.
I know we're talking about that as a, as a district, Brian, about bringing in additional EL teaching, uh, TFTs. To more adequately cover the need that just keeps growing.
Well, thank you for laying that out. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Um, Mauro. I just wanted to thank everybody for all the work that they've done. Um, I think I was completely blown away. What by how many ELL students we have. I mean, it's just amazing. And concerning too, you know, that, that we don't really have the, um. The coverage or we, you know, having to kind of scramble to cover, um. To help all these students, um, especially ones where we potentially don't have, um, speakers. In those languages. So, um, I really, um. You know, I, I'll definitely be interested to hear more about how we're doing, dealing with that, um, over the coming months. I wanted to, um, then also think, um. Chuck, um, putting in goals, the goals that you have for the, for the coming year. Um, that was really helpful to hear too. Um, it would, it would be great to hear, um, what the, um. Student improve, or school improvement goals for next year, um, for the other two schools would be helpful. Um, at some point. Um, and I think that's it, um, for me. We've been on here for a really long time. So.
Um, I'll try to go pretty fast with my questions. I really appreciate this. I think I love how the goals touch on such different areas. Um, how you're not just targeting one area, you're target, targeting the academic needs, the social emotional needs, the EL student needs. Um, and really making such great strides moving forward. Um, I was particularly excited to hear about Fowler. Um, tying the assessments to the interventions, um, and having that cemented for the future. Um, and the, um. The necessities closet. One thing I just wanted to suggest is if you guys haven't reached out to Cradles to Crayons. Um, schools can place orders with them for particular things.
Oh, great, thank you.
Yeah, I, I was involved with a preschool that got, uh, coats every year and bathing suits and would reach out once a week almost for neat, for things.
Oh, great. If you have a contact, do you mind emailing it to me?
Sure.
Thank you.
Um, for, I just wanted to, so the grant funded guidance counselor at Green Meadow, is that, um. For Esser or is that a grant that might continue?
So I'm gonna, I'm going to probably pass that one off, just so you know, Hillary. Um, last year I believe it was monies that. Um, Mr. Ferrante and, and we had through the, through the, uh, district. And, um, we're just, I mean, we're delighted and we're lucky to have her this year because we did have a, a counselor that was out. On maternity leave, so it really worked out very well. I don't know, but I believe she might be into the budget or working herself into the budget. For this year, here.
Um, for the high school with the advisories, I felt, was last time, did you say they were monthly? Are they weekly now?
Um, they're a little bit better than monthly now. Uh, doesn't work out to bi-weekly, but it's more than once a month. And, uh. We have the, initially we had some comfort animals come in, uh, as part of an advisory. And that proved so popular, we're, we're having them in on a much more regular basis. So, uh, it's just. It, we had, we had them in last week and, you know, they, they check in at the main office and. I was walking by and, and one of the dogs just looked at me and was wagging his tail and looked like the happiest creature on earth. And, you know, I think he knew he was about to get a lot of love from the high school students.
The first time you had them come, that was through a partnership with the police department, right? Is that still what it's through?
Uh, no, it's actually, it's actually spun into as kind of a standalone thing now. And, uh, they've been. They've been very generous, uh, in terms of, uh, your fee structure. It's, it's. It's essentially close to free at this point. So it's, it's been fantastic. And.
That's awesome.
Yeah.
Um, is the homework club similar to Fowler's homework club, um, in terms of, as, you know, teacher support with the, um, regular days classwork?
Uh, there, uh, there are teachers, uh, in paraprofessionals, um. Who work, uh, from two, basically an hour Mondays through Thursdays. Um, there is outreach to the teachers to, to see if students are bringing work they need to do. Um, students can also just come and utilize it as a resource without any sort of mandate or need. Like just if a student knows that they might need some extra support with their English homework tonight, they can just kind of come. Uh, and, and again, it's Monday through Thursday for an hour every day after school.
That's great. I know that the, the Fowler one was really helpful, um, to a lot of kids. So I love that you've expanded that. Um, and then my last thing is just that, um, I really like that the cost for summer school end up going down from three fifty. To a hundred, but I'd love if we could, you know, consider, um, reconsidering that. Uh, I, I just feel like we don't wanna, I want the kids to get as much support as they can get. Um, and I feel like the fees land on the parents more so than the kids, which is a good thing. But I assume most parents already have incentive to want their kids to do well and graduate. And I just would, I worry about the kids that might fall through cra, the cracks between the free and reduced school lunch. And being able to comfortably afford it. And who, you know, I know my daughter has not told me about an activity she wanted to participate in. That we could have afforded, but she assumed that the price was too much. And so I worry about kids that think. They don't want to ask their parents for a hundred dollars or, um, families that think, you know, they could afford it, but things are really tough right now. So maybe they'll wait and just, I wanna, um, I'd love if we could reconsider that or, or think some more about that. Um, but I love that, that it's gone down from three fifty and that you've brought it in so that kids can get here, get there more easily. And it's more accessible as far as transportation goes, um, and all the programming being put in place for the summer. Um, I think we're so limited with the regular work, um, school hours. And so expanding that into the after school in the summer is, um, really fantastic.
Okay.
So thank you all. Um, any last things about this before we go on to the next topic? Any last things about this before we go on to the next topic?
Thanks for hanging in there with us.
Thank you guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Sorry, it's gone so late. So we have superintendent's report.
All right. So I did it, it a little bit differently. I did it like last time, which is a presentation. So Colleen will sort of walk us through that. Cause I think it's a little easier to follow. She's calling it up right now. And why she's doing that, I will echo the appreciation of the principals for all their hard work and sharing all that information tonight. Lots of great things happening. Which kind of leads to the beginning of the superintendent's report, which is really broken down into four categories. It starts with positive news for the district. There it is. And next slide, we're gonna. So very exciting. If you're not following the most recent athletic events of Maynard, the boys and girls basketball teams both went postseason. They both played really well, March 4th, a couple of Fridays ago. Unfortunately, the girls, it was one of those games, if you have kids or if you watch high school sports. Sometimes you do everything you can and you're in the right place at the right time. And in basketball, the ball just does not drop. And that was the case of the girls. They played a great game. And the boys, they played equally well and they couldn't miss. They just, it was, the score was high, which allowed them to move on to play. So they beat Crystal Raid and the boys went on to play Mount Greylock. And then actually on Sunday, just in case we wanted to see the far western part of the state, they played in North Adams at Drury High School, a team that was seeded higher than they were. And they played their game and they played well. They should be proud of themselves. We're proud of them. They won, allowing them to move on, I believe to the final four. They will play Wednesday night at Worcester North. So if you are so inclined, you can still buy tickets for that. You need to buy them online at GoFan. It's well worth the $10 for a ticket because it's a lot of fun, a lot of good energy. And we even were able to bring a fan bus out to North Adams on Sunday. Thanks to our AD and school administration, Principal Karajanis rode the fan bus all the way from Maynard to North Adams and back. So he's a trooper. Another exciting thing over the weekend, it was a busy weekend. In case you, you should not have been bored if you took the time to see Into the Woods, the high school play. They, it was a phenomenal production. They actually did it four times over the two and a half days, Friday night, opening night, great, great job, long play. You know, it's a solid couple hour production. And again, they did it four times. I mean, I just incredibly well done. And in addition, separate note, the communications department at the high school had several students win the number one spot in the 2022 Massachusetts Fire Prevention PSA competition. Really exciting. Actually, W, let's think about this, WCVB Channel 5 is actually coming out to the high school to interview those students on Thursday. So just really exciting, good things happening. Our kids are working hard and doing well.
There's a cool video.
Great videos.
Yeah, the video was hilarious too. They did a really phenomenal job there. By online, don't charge your phone under your pillow, fire hazard.
Correct. All right. Next slide, please. The first annual green medal whiz fit is up and coming and the PTO is starting to promote that. So if you haven't already, you will see information about that. And it's an interactive community event featuring the Harlem Wizards basketball team. Taking on some of our own teachers, students and administrators, depending on, on who's involved with that. So more information about that. Terms of water, water hydration station at Fowler, we've got a, it's not a grant, I take that back. Our business manager, Wayne White, found this opportunity. And we were able to install it at Fowler. It's been really very successful. It allows us to have ongoing water filtered for the students at all times. And it's similar to what is already in place at the high school, the hydration stations. So kids can fill a water bottle and/or a glass, a cup, not a glass, a cup for water. And we'll continue to encourage kids to bring water bottles to school. So that's just been a good success. We're evaluating that. We will likely add another one. At Fowler, and I know he's in, Wayne is in discussions with Principal Rulo about Green Meadow and where those might fit and how that might work there. Fowler School started practice for Fiddler on the Roof Junior. So they don't want to be outdone when that, and that's a couple of months out, I believe. But that'll be another opportunity for you to come and celebrate with our, in this case, the Fowler students. And just sort of different subject here, budget subject, that Medicaid is really a reimbursement from the state to town budgets. And due to a variety of reasons, some of it was reclassification on their part, how they assess things. Some of it was more work on making sure that we're turning in the proper paperwork. It's a lot of work to collect the data, submit it to get reimbursement, but we are, the town is up, if you will, $92,000 in terms of Medicaid reimbursement. So we'll keep working on that. And hoping that some of that money comes back to the schools. In our case, it goes directly to the town and then we work that out. So, but that's good news, both big picture, town of Maynard and little picture, school, Maynard. Some COVID updates. We had very successful. Okay. I hope everybody's okay. I know I am. Optional masking began. And I am happy to report that it went really well, that there clearly are still kids and adults wearing masks. And there are kids and adults not wearing masks. And that seems just to be the way it is in every school that I've seen. Not just in Maynard, but other schools around Massachusetts. That's where they're at. For the most part, it's going really well. We're still providing at-home antigen tests to both students and staff. We're still continuing with pool testing. Our pools continuously are coming up negative. We've had very minimal positive cases in the past couple of weeks. And there's a link to another, I don't know of a link on this. School committee members saw this in terms of filter usage. So the important part is we used to have MERV eight filters at our schools. We no longer use any MERV eight. They've been, all been upgraded to either 11. She is good. 11 or 13. Now, if you're looking at the screen, you can see that. So there are filters, let's see. And what's the difference, what we've done during the pandemic and most recently is we used to change filters annually. If they're MERV elevens, we are changing them every six months. And if they are MERV thirteens, we actually change them quarterly because they just, that's what you need to do. And then there's some pricing on there in terms of what does it actually cost per filter and how much does it cost? Given our cycling in terms of changing. And we spend right now, it's just, just over $8,000 on filters at these levels. And we'll continue to evaluate that and see, can we, in fact, a lot of it is outside my area of expertise. I know that will shock you that I am not the HVAC expert, but I am learning a lot about it. That not every component can take a MERV 13 filter. It's not, you would have, you would in effect burn through the motor that's pushing the air very quickly. So we're just reevaluating, reevaluating which places we can increase from 11 to 13. Right now you can see that we have about 70 or so, 72, I think, filters at the high school predominantly at the 13 level. The rest are elevens. So, next slide. So before we go into the next slide, so this is not a voting issue and I'm happy to say, I've seen Chief Noble's name on the screen all night. I apologize that it took this long to get here, but he is here. We've worked together and we've talked about this and they've actually redone the MOU at the state level recently. So the MOU that we have now is the newest one. I'm not going to redo the MOU. It's a relatively long legal document. The purpose of what's in this presentation is really to identify the key areas within the document. And the chief is here as well because he's much more experienced with the MOUs and the, the school resource officer.
Frank, can I have a question real quick? Just, I, I don't want to hold up Chief Noble and the MOA, but I want to make sure after, maybe we can revisit the other parts of your superintendent report. Once we, I don't know Hillary, once we complete the, the MOU discussion. Is that possible?
Probably yes.
Okay. That's it. Just wanted to.
No problem.
Want to clarity there.
And so you can see, these are the newest guidelines as of 2021. Next, next slide. We're kind of going to go. So the only reason this slide is even on there, there's just a lot of names on there, which may not mean a lot to everybody, but there's some, they're probably all super important. I actually don't know all of them. But the top name, Paul Andrews, who recently passed away, has been a very, very strong advocate for schools in Massachusetts. And has worked with the Association of School Superintendents for years and years and years. And he was one of the people who was part of this commission. As well as you can see, there are administrators, there are social workers and a variety of other roles that were involved in this. So I just thought it was worth noting that it isn't just two or three people that got together and said, hey, this is what it should be. It's a, it's a pretty powerful group if you do any work on that. The purpose is to formalize and clarify the implementation of the partnership between the school and the school resource officer and the police department. And really, and the purpose is nice because it's really, what is it really about? Why do we do this? It's to help maintain a positive school climate for all students, families and staff, enhance the cultural understanding between students and law enforcement, which totally makes sense. Promote participation and completion by students, facilitate appropriate information sharing. And then keep information open, inform parties collaboratively of events within the community. All right. So again, this rephrases some of what I just talked about in terms of the partnerships between the police department and the school resource officer and the schools and the students and the families. And really building that positive relationship as opposed to the only time, if you know, if I'm your average person, maybe the only time I see a police officer is when I get pulled over for a ticket. I might not have a great vibe for law enforcement. This sets up a whole different dynamic between a law enforcement person and our students and staff and et cetera. There we go. Roles and responsibilities. So they're effective, they are a municipal police officer with all the training. And when I say all the training, there's actually a lot of very specific training that goes into becoming a school resource officer. And we, we know that it's identified, we support that. One of the key things here is that the school resource officer is not the disciplinarian or the enforcer of school regulations. We, you know, the principal, the assistant principal, the teachers, the staff, they, that's on them, not the school resource officer. There are support role in this. And this is probably more in the chief's area because we're really getting to some of the process, but I thought it was interesting, some of the things I, I highlighted just to point out that a lot of what's involved in this has to do with conflict resolution and diversion strategies, de-escalation tactics, trauma-informed practices, diversity, equity, inclusion, behavioral health. So lots of the things should sound familiar. Cause we talk about them at the school level and the police talk about them. So they're embedded in here. All right, Colleen. There's an annual review with the chief of police and the superintendent, sharing information with the school committee as well. And that comes up a couple of times in here. Mechanisms to incorporate the school resource officer into the school environment. Just formally introducing them. Our current school resource officer is still going through a fair amount of training. She becomes full-time effective, I believe, in the end of April. And they're invited to meetings. Yeah, that's fine. No, no, that's okay. And this just talks about appropriate sharing of information. Yep. At all times, we comply with the Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act, otherwise known as FERPA and student, you know, student records regulations. Some of this is pretty straightforward. The school resource officer is actually a member of the local police department and reports to the deputy chief. I referenced, there's the training and just, there is a lot of training involved in this. They take it very seriously. And it's different training than if it's just a regular police officer. So there's things about child adolescent cognitive development. Trauma, mental illness, behavioral addictions, et cetera. Data collection. So it's just. So we do collect the data and some of it, honestly, it's more for bigger systems. So I don't think we have a lot, like for example, how many school-based arrest citations, court referrals are made in a town, in most of the towns that were around, that's a very, very low number. If we were in a bigger city, this has, you know, this would have more implications. Standard operating procedures. That's just spelled out what they wear when they come to work. They follow the school schedule, et cetera. So the MOU is ready to be signed by both the chief of police and myself. It's reviewed annually at the start of the year. We're way past that, but they just redid those and they just, they've sent them out relatively recently, which is why we're sort of off cycle, if you will. We'll get back on cycle, I'm sure. That's, well, we'll hold that. Well, so that's the MOU section and really you've, you've got the entire MOU. I pulled out sort of the topics with some of the key items in there, just so you're aware. And we can come back to that. But the last section that I want to should, Mass School Building Authority, which I should probably spell that out because we're used to MSBA because we talk about it all the time. That's the Green Meadow Building Project. That's the state agency. So we've been continuously working on that. We actually invited them to our most recent fields meeting. Cause one of the things we recognize is that the sort of unofficial field behind Green Meadow is important. And they got to hear that from, when I say they represented from Colliers International and NVG Architects Design Firm. Got to, got a better understanding of that through our fields meeting, which has some of the key players for all the youth sports, the soccer, the youth football. Soccer, football, et cetera. And just here, how that field actually is used and what would be a benefit to a new green medal. We've, the MSBA, as of the end of last week, I believe, March 7th, they are in receipt of our preliminary design program, which is a relatively large amount of information that Colliers and NVG collect from us. We work on an educational plan. And that all gets submitted to the Mass School Building Authority who reviews that. And they're in the process of reviewing. They will then send back with questions, clarifications, anything that they need from us. And then sort of then, once that gets resolved, the next big step for the Mass School Building Authority, the Green Meadow Building Project will be some public presentations about where, where are we at now and what are the options looking forward? So you'll start to hear about that in probably the next six to eight weeks. Having some presentations. But I see, and I don't see a lot of people on my screen right now. I see literally four people and one of them is Chief Noble. So I certainly want to stop talking and give the chief the opportunity to say, say whatever he wants about the school resource officer. Thank him for hanging in there tonight. It's important to have him as a partner. So chief, turn that over to you.
Thanks, Brian. The school resource officer's position in Maynard has been solidified over the last decade or so. And in the last few years, it's, it's definitely changed because of the police reform and what is expected. The resource officer is Alice McCann. On April 25th, she will go into that assignment as her full-time duty. Right now she's been a part-time resource officer because she has to do that because of our staffing shortages. In May, we should. In May, we should be close to being back to full staffs. So April 25th, she goes to that position Monday through Friday and she'll be up at the schools most of the time during the day. At least when schools are open, but she'll be the one automatically contacted. Some days during the week now, she's not working, so there'll be another officer to. The main thing is, is, you know, this is more of collaboration and partnership building, you know? This is not a disciplinary, you know, the, the main, you know, one of the main components is the overall safety of the children, of course. But they're not up there enforcing hardly anything, you know? They may have to de-escalate a situation, which has happened on a number of occasions, but it's usually a child in crisis that we're just, you know. All they do is go in and talk to them, kind of separate, you know, and then get them the, the help that they need, that the student needs or. The parents or the family needs, because then we have the social worker that usually follows up with any student that has crisis. But there are many things that the SRO probably does that not everybody sees. The information sharing, that's it, that some people think, oh, that it's very beneficial for Maynard. Where the SRO knows when something happened at some student's house on the overnight and they're not in school or they're not this. And they can just relate to the information. Yeah, we know where they are. They're safe. They're not this. It's happened many a times when they've collaborated with the administrations of the schools. The, the main thing is that it's, it, we have a small community, you know? And it's really good partnership for the police and the schools because the students see the student resource officer as, you know, a person. You know, somebody to go up to. One of my main focuses is the mental. The health issues and I know Chuck had mentioned it, but you know, we are looking to this summer, get a comfort dog, surface dog for the SRO. To bring to the school. So that's another factor that will be a, a positive thing for the schools to be. With the police, just to see that, you know, that's, you know, we are there to help, especially in like our, our close, tight-knit community. So if anybody has, I, the training for the SRO too is probably, they receive. Between that and the detective, but actually detective gets more of this initially annually, the SRO has to get more training than anybody on the department. Because they have to go through regular, you know, in-service and trainings. Then they have to go through all of those separate trains. They have to go to another week just for SRO training. And then they have to go to other specialized trainings also. So they're highly trained. And this is not a position that any officer can do. You know, there's, there's certain positions that as a chief in this, I have to pick the right officers. Field Training Officer and SROs are probably the two biggest ones. Any questions that anybody has? So be happy to answer.
Um, before we go around with questions, I just wanted to make sure everybody knew that we don't need to vote on this. This is Chief Noble and Brian's decision. And then we also will, the DEI subcommittee is going to look into this and talk more with the police department on the summer. And then this will be up again for next school year. So it's just for a short term. So that will help focus questions. Mary, I saw you had your hand raised.
Yeah, chief, um, how does, how will Alice split her time? Is it pretty much a third, a third, a third at the three different schools or is it that structured?
Yeah, I, I mean, it's, it's not completely, she'll have like office hours for the high school. Like when the kids can go because at their age, they're more apt to approach her more. For the other schools, she'll, like, the follower has a lot of different type, you know, each school has their own type of issues and things that you would have to go to. The old, the old adage is if the SRO is having a bad day, go to Green Meadow because all the kids there are happy to see you and they'll cheer you up, you know? So, but it, there'll, there'll be some structure, but it'll be, you know, some days that, that one school knee is having. More functions, more things that, that would take the time, but she's available, like the principals will have her phone number to call her. Like, hey, we need you over here, here, now, you know, so starting April 25th, yes, like her whole day could be at the schools. You know, at times she will have to come to station, maybe to do a report or something like that or to check in. But the times will be, you know, I can't say that they will be like 30, 30, 30. Because at times, sometimes she'll be 50% at the high school and sometimes 50% at Green Meadow and, you know, 50, you know, at different times. But she'll spend some time at every school, most days.
And now just one other question, um, because I think when Trista was the SRO, she actually did some instructional. Like, you know, in, especially at the lower grades and that, is there anything planned for that to go into the classrooms and, and that? Or is it pretty much going to be just office time at the three schools?
No, no, it, I mean, I still go up to the high school and help with some of the law and government classes. I used to do the dare classes. So the, you know, that, if she's requested to speak at any of the classes, you know, she, she'd be more than happy to go in there and speak, you know? That's that, that's part of a role, yes. You know, but it's not defined. She'll speak with the principals and how they want to decide it because I know their curriculums have to be followed on a strict basis.
Thank you.
Can you go next? Okay. Thank you very much for, for coming out and presenting. I know this, we've been hearing about this for past year. Things were changing and, and, and I wanted to get your understanding on what, what substantive changes. Happened between the prior MOU under the, under the prior regs. Versus what you've seen evolve with the new MOA, the template that they put together. Has there been huge substantive changes is that you're, could, that you could call out without, you know, that just, that came across as needing to be amended?
Um, that, I mean, some of the main ones were the information sharing. That really doesn't have to do a lot with Maynard. That has to do with more the cities with gang affiliation. You can't keep that. You can't transmit, you know, certain information on, on students that has to do with criminal behavior. But we don't have, that's, that's not the purview of the SRO for the most part. Yes, if, if that ever did occur in schools, you know, we'd want to know about that. There's other minor offenses that are no longer in there, that sharing of minor. That could be considered a crime at a school, but they're not, that you don't want it like alcohol possession or something like that, that you don't have to report to us. You can handle that internally with prior ones. But we, we, we had a new MOU in 2018 that actually answered most of these questions, you know? And that, that it, it hasn't changed that much. That, at that time, it was all, the discipline was basically. We're not involved in any of the discipline. We don't want to be, you know, involved in, at times, I still, uh. You know, we, we still go over like, no, we shouldn't be involved in, in doing that, e- even in the minor stuff. Like, because just the, the color of our uniforms and everything, sometimes evokes like the authority, like, why did you call the cops on me? No, no, they were just checking on you. You know, it, if it's a disciplinary matter, we shouldn't really be involved unless, unless there's a reasonable reason for it.
I, I appreciate you highlighting that. And I also was looking through and I, I really appreciate the information about the trauma-informed practices. The de-escalation training, all those things. I know that is areas with the staff that has been highly focused on. And so, you know, hearing how all that extensive training that Alice will be, you know, needing to do to get caught up to speed. Is, I think, just so critical and, and, you know, great, I'm really glad that they codified it that way in the MOA. Just to, or the MOU, just to really put a pin in, in how, how important it is for that relationship. And you said something just now, which I, I think is just really, you know, looking at our growing EL community where they're coming. You know, you have students coming from so many different backgrounds, sometimes potentially from countries that maybe don't have favorable views of. You know, authority or military figures and wherever they might, might be. I think that relationship building is just really critical in, you know, presenting, you know, sometimes they're coming from a place or experiences. Or even in the city, when, you know, the kids move here, they're just so different, you know, than Maynard in our small, small town. So I, I, I really, I really value that, that effort of relationship building. So that our support can be looked at in a favorable way for, for our students to go to when they need help. And not be fearful of, or that they are only brought in under bad instances. You know, which is really, really, really important for that younger, younger group to understand. Just some general clarifying questions. So it is going to be a full-time FTE that she will be with the school department? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
But you. She's under us, all the costs borne by us. That's part of the MOU, yeah.
Yeah, I was, I just, I, I think, thank you, Frank. That's my other part too, because I wasn't quite sure. I know that she was reporting to, you know, the, the police. But, but the, the, I guess the expectation would be that they're primarily, all of her work would be with the school department. As a full-time individual.
Yes, like, her, her Monday through Friday during school hours is a.
Maynard has been so lucky to have such great resource officers. I think our last one loved education so much, they went off to become a teacher. So I think it's really fantastic that we, we have these positive influences. And I, I look forward to having, you know, meeting, meeting her at a, maybe a future meeting. I know the past, we've had that opportunity and, and I would really love to see that again. That's it. Thank you very much.
Yes, we, we did talk about it at a future meeting, once she starts to full-time that way. Because if she's not working on a day and somebody wanted to set up a time, but after she starts full-time, she'll absolutely come to one of the meetings, introduced to herself. And on another note, on, that's, I, I'm a big believer in that, that, you know, initial. Communications with police and kids from other countries. We, we, we just hired somebody and he wanted to be a police officer. He came from Ghana. And he.
Is it justice?
Yes.
Yeah, I saw that him enter, yeah, one of the.
And his, his story of like why he wanted to, you know, he came here, his, his, his parents were already here and he came here when he was a teenager. And a state police trooper at the airport was asking him like, you okay? Do you need help? You need this? And in his country, you don't look a police officer in the eye. So, so just that, those little things that the officer just then talked to him like that and he never forgot that. You know, that was 15 or so years ago that it happened. He never forgot that. He still thought, you know, admirable. So I do agree absolutely that those communications at, you know, young age and even, you know, teenager. Make a difference, those positive ones, because if you only remember the, you know, if you only had a negative one, you got nothing to fall back on.
Yeah, I think oftentimes, again, police are just assumed to be brought into situations when something goes wrong. And I think that easily a child can, you know, form, you know, that they're only brought in on their bad instances. And, and that happens sometimes even with staff, you know, going to the principal's office. And so it's just having that positive relationship on the onset that they're there for other supportive ways is just critical. So, thank you.
I don't have any, excuse me, any specific questions, but I, I'm really looking forward to meeting her when she comes on full-time. Thank you very much.
Alright.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, I can't hear you.
I said, no, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. And I said, no questions tonight, but thanks very much for coming, especially for staying so late.
Um, my questions are really quick. First, I, I think Allison, Officer McCann is going to be awesome. I know the kids really, really loved her at the youth police academy in the summer. And my daughter loved her. All the other kids seemed to really love her. So I think that's such a great fit. My only question, does anything in this agreement change day-to-day things or will bring about other policy changes that would have to be made? Or is this like consistent enough to what's been already happening on a day-to-day basis?
Yeah, this is, this is similar to the prior one, like I said, about the. There's less required of the school to report to us. That's, that's, that's the main component. Everything else is stayed the same because that's, that, that's how we operate anyways. We didn't want to be up there. You know, look, for lack of a better term, looking for problems. We want to go up there, you know, to build bridges, to, you know, partnership and collaborations.
The only part that I was iffy about with regards to that is the section that says. That the SRO can help if there's an emergency situation where a child's in need of medical or psychological assistance. And then it says that intervention is appropriate only when a nurse psychologist or social worker is not available. And I didn't know if in practice, that's really what happens or if, it seems like maybe there are fast-moving situations where there's a social worker available at the school. But things seem to be escalating beyond what they're necessarily comfortable with and the school's calling for police assistance. And so I didn't know if that was a part was really being, would really, has been followed.
I, I know a, a few incidences that, that it's happened and police officer is basically just there to just talk, calm down. You know, as, you know, with, use de-escalation. But I think that is going to the new road where that's when you would call up the social worker. We do have a social worker that would get there, but they probably would take some time or the school counselors would take, maybe take time to get there. But if somebody's out of control, that goes beyond that, that part of it, if somebody was just having. A non-violent part, then the counselors would take over. I think, I, I think you might, I don't know, I don't want to put words in my mouth, but are you talking about somebody who is like out of control? Like, and may cause harm to somebody, whether it's intentional or not intentional?
Yeah.
Yeah, that, that we have, we have not just school MOUs, we have like protocols where we can do what's called section 12. Where somebody, you know, if they were, could be a harm to themselves or others, we can involuntarily bring them to the hospital, but.
My question is more before that, like, does this paragraph mean that if a nurse, school psychologist or school social worker is at school? Is it not appropriate for the school to call the SRO?
Can I, can I review that and get an answer? Because I, I, I would have to read exactly. I, I didn't read it that way, but that's, you know, I, I, I don't want to, I want to make sure it doesn't say that. Because I don't want that if that was the case, you know?
Yeah.
At any, in any occasion, you know?
Yeah. I want the school social worker and school psychologist to help first. But I know that, that there's not necessarily time for them to realize it's past their abilities. And then call for help and that hap, that leg can be tough. So I didn't know how that would play out, but.
If, if it says something like that, maybe in collaboration with, you know, could do with the, the school, you know? You know, when reasonable.
And then I noticed when it listed the training that the school resource officer gets, it doesn't talk about children with special needs. Is that because all the officers have training in dealing with mental health issues and special needs anyway? So it's included in that?
Hey, yeah, our, our annual in-service training, the regular officers have, have all mental health training. Every year and all the officers have what's called CIT training and, and the like. We have, I'm, I'm a very big proponent on training. So we go over the, what we have to get, you know, so. But yes, there's, there's several types of mental health trains. They usually have different ones each year. Sometimes with different mental health areas, you know, to, to go over. So, but they, that's for every officer too. So that's probably why it's not mentioned.
Thanks so much.
I just make one more comment, Mike. So the past two SROs that we've had have also participated. They've been members of the wellness committee. So hopefully Alice will do the same because they're really obviously instrumental. So. Yeah, thank you.
Yes, so the, well, the safety, all of those, as I said, now, starting next month, wish it'll be full-time. That'll be a full-time, she'll be on, you know, and definitely be a lot more visible.
Thank you.
Thanks. Do we want to do questions on the other aspects of the superintendent's report real quick?
Thanks, Chief Noble.
Let Chief Noble.
Yeah.
Off.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Thanks for waiting for so long too. So it is almost 10, but are there quick questions about the superintendent's report?
Yeah, I just have questions about, I have questions about the filtration, of course. Yeah, I just have questions about, I have questions about the filtration, of course. So my concern again is just that it's the MERV thirteen and up that really help with, getting particles as small as COVID, and I'm sure there are other things too. Um, and, and as we move forward, again, I think, I think that the filtration is something that we can, um, make sure that we're doing the best job as possible for all our students. And so that would make a healthier environment in every way, for, for as long as we can afford it. Um, so I think, so I, so I really appreciate that you gave us that, that spreadsheet. Um, I have a, I want to know more about how we could potentially get the MERV thirteens in the buildings that are not the high school. I, my, what I think I know is that potentially Green Meadows HVAC system is very old and not maybe, um, maybe can't handle something higher than an, a MERV eleven. I don't know if that's true. But I, but my other question with Green Meadow then is that they have those filter, filtration systems in their room. I know they have the portable ones and I just, I wanted to know more, you know, if, if we, because we already had this other problem at Green Meadow, if we can't have a better system built into our HVAC, do we already have something that takes its place in the classrooms? With those other filtration systems, are they enough? And then what can we do at Fowler to get those in? And something, as you said, I'm not, I'm also not an expert at filtration, but I also wonder about things like HEPA filters. Is there a way to get those in instead? So can we have that information too?
I will continue to work with the facilities manager and get more information. My understanding for Green Meadow is that those air purifiers that we have in every room in that building, and to your point, we got them prior to the pandemic. Those were the filters everyone was trying to get last year.
Yeah. So if we could just like know which ones they are and then, you know, like do they- They only have, is there a certain shelf life for them that we should be thinking about?
Yeah, I'll get you the specifics on those. They do have filters which are changed out. There's a, there's a system in place for that that's been in place since we've had them for a couple of years now. But I can get you the exact models and specifics of them.
Yeah. And, and the only reason I'm, I am pushing this now just because we do have the money for it now and it is something that we can maybe address now that will be good for a longer time for all our students. And so I just want to get it in place while we still have this potential way to pay for it and get it going. All right. So, so that, and then again, at Fowler, is there a way to get thirteens in there or is there a way to get even HEPA filters in there? Um, and if not, what, what can we do? Because eleven just doesn't, doesn't help us with COVID. Um, and it, and it may not help us with other things coming down the road either, so.
I'll continue to work and get some more information on that for you. Sure.
And just because I am, like I am, um, can, can you tell me when we'll have that information by?
Um, no, not exactly, because I'm working with other people to get that.
Okay. So when should I, when should I ask again if I don't hear?
I will have something by the next school committee meeting for you.
Okay. All right. Thanks.
Asha, I know you had things.
Yeah, um, one, I, I thank you for highlighting all the, the positive news coming up and what's going on. Um, I also wanted to add, if, um, because the CPAC has a couple of events that will be kind of coming out. They have March twenty-eighth, Sarah Ward's executive function presentation, which has been shared within the, the different buildings. So, just to highlight that, um, and there will be a, a guy, a couple of other presenters within the next, um, couple of weeks, months, that will be, um, highlighted, um, as well. So just, uh, Brian, maybe, um, can, I can send you some information about those, just incorporate in your superintendent report, just going forward to get as much buzz around those other activities available to, to families that are being, um, highlighted within the buildings as well.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. And also, um, just kudos to, um, you and, um, Jeff and Wayne for the Medicaid reimbursement. I mean, um, that is, all of it goes to the town, um, and it's all with the effort of the school department. And, and, you know, doing all those claims and reimbursement. So I just want to, you know, I, I wish it was a little differently and I have asked that we consider, um, potentially a sixty, forty split or something to that effect, since that has been the, the cut, the standard. Uh, when we get expenses that we need to, to pay, I think that, um, you know, should certainly be looked at again. And I did see it was in, um, your communication to, to Greg was in the SLU boards packet for this evening. Um, although, um, I won't hear what they said, but just so we can, we can go back and listen to it afterwards and, and how it was received. So just wanted just to thank that hard work and, and getting those dollars, um, whether we come directly or indirectly to us, it's just much appreciated. Because I know it's something, um, Mary, I've been asking like a couple of years, Mary probably even longer. So it's just really, really great to see some of those efforts come to fruition. And, um, the only thing, I'm not going to beat a dead horse about the filters, but just, uh, in circulating an article, um, that came out just yesterday, NPR, about general, um, air quality and what the impact has to long-term student outcome. Um, aside from COVID, there was, it was just a great, um, point that talked about, you know, asthma, all, uh, learning, focus, all those things. So I just maybe holistically would like that to be looked at as a, an approach and thinking of it that way, not the narrow lens of just COVID, but all other, you know, output of, of improving student outcomes, um, you know, less absenteeism, all those things that, um, you know, filtration, um, can, can help with. And so that, for me, that would be something I'd want to, to look at it from that lens. If there's opportunities there, you know, improving, uh, less, you know, O two or CO2, you know, in the air, all those, um, all those components as well, in addition to COVID concerns. And then the only other thing that, and I, 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 all the MOA stuff, I, I, I appreciate it was all boilerplate, uh, boilerplate, uh, template. Um, and I was able really to see that, um, is just, um, the honing in on just some of the, the data collection that we, I know that this, it wasn't really part of your report, but just kind of emphasizing to you, I really want to make sure that the data that's being used and some of the decision-making at the schools with, uh, their improvement plans, that the school committee has the opportunity to, um, be privy to those, those efforts for those teams that they've been working on. It's great that they're being, you know, used for local decision-making, but I'd like to also see how those SRO funds, you know, the data, the output from what we've, you know, allocated for those, um, what that looks like and how we can, you know, justify that even more, um, how it's benefiting, um, our, our operations and improvements. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions for the superintendent's report? Okay. Um, thanks, Brian. Uh, thanks for getting the info on those filters. Continue to work on that.
Thank you. Yeah.
For the chairs report, um, I just want to tag on to that Medicare reimburse, Medicaid reimbursement thing. I can't believe that we're getting money, you know, that's from them that can go to any sort of capital planning needs for the town in the future. Like, it seems kind of crazy to me that that's not going back to the same type of needs that the federal department is intending to pay for. But, um, it's still awesome that we're bringing in money to the town.
I know. I almost believe it exactly how you said that, Hillary.
It just, it seems bizarre to me.
Productive, yes, but it's okay.
We're, we're doing our best. We're doing our best. We're supporting.
So there was a field meeting last week. Um, I don't have a lot for the recap of that. Um, it was, uh, they outlined that Keenan was the most used field, um, based on the data, on the data that, um, Dan collected. Uh, which was interesting because they're the field that was sort of highlighted as being in the worst condition. And receiving the least town, funded maintenance. There were a lot of different values that were, um, shared in terms of, um, the amounts of money that different types of maintenance would cost and where the gap is in the budget. And then, um, and Justin shared how much he was requesting, uh, be added to his DPW budget to cover field maintenance. It was a little confusing how much of that would actually go to field maintenance and whether some of that is also available for other maintenance in town. Um, and that, but then there's still a gap left that, um, would need to be covered with user fees or, advertising. And so then there was a discussion about types of advertising. And, um, the next meeting is soon, um, at the end of March. It was only a couple of week gap between those two meetings to follow up on advertising. And then, um, last week, we had the leadership meeting with, um, Brian, uh, David Gavin, Greg, um, and myself, and mostly talked about the budget. The only really new thing that was shared was, um, briefly, it was being said that the school was worth, um, five hundred thousand dollars was going to be devoted to, uh, replacing the bleachers. Um, that's gone down to a hundred and seventy-five thousand. And Greg sounded like the two-point-five percent that was in his last update for the budget is probably where we're going to stay. Of course, there's some, something like information from the state can change and whatnot, but, um, that's basically the value we're at. Um, we talked about concerns about where that leaves the schools. And I shared some of my frustration. Um, we also talked about planning for the tri-board meeting next week. And, um, it sounded like, um, David wasn't super interested in more discussion about the budget for next year at that meeting. But in follow-up conversations, both Alana and I mentioned that at the last tri-board meeting, at the budget meeting in February, um, we left things with understanding that we were going to discuss it further. Um, particularly because FinCom didn't have an opportunity to really get into their thoughts. And I think it's also important for us because I think a lot of the FinCom members feel like the budget currently being, planned for the school isn't sufficient. So, um, that's a real opportunity for advocacy. But I thought even if there wasn't a lot, um, it was, it was explained that because the budget at this point is in the hands of the select board, um, there wasn't a lot for, there wasn't a lot that we could expect to have change based on our discussions next week. So if that discussion doesn't go very far, um, I suggested it was still worth meeting, um, because we could talk about, the inter-board relationships and, um, goal planning for the future. So if it's too late to do much about it this year, we could at least start talking about next year. I'm a little bit confused also because, um, I've been going to the mask charting the course training. And they were actually talking about, a lot about how the school committee puts forth a budget at town meeting. And that it doesn't have to be the same budget that the select board puts forth. Um, or that is recommended by FinCom. And so I don't know that that's the direction we want to go. Um, but it was interesting that, um, it's sort of treated like the budget put forth by the select board is the only option. Um, and there, it may be something that the town should have more involvement in than they currently do. And then, um, just the next school committee, um, it's going to have to be posted, obviously. Um, but the next school committee meeting will involve the budget hearing for this budget. So, um, people can speak and share their thoughts and comments and concerns about the budget proposal at our meeting, in a couple of weeks. So that's all I have. Um.
Hillary, could I add a little bit more on the budget from the FinCom from last night?
A real quick, a fine question before you get into more details like that. So, at your leadership meeting, did they already know at that point that we brought in the, the seventy, the ninety-five thousand dollars that was already on the table at that point? This is, and that, and that moved them zero?
Yes.
Wasn't discussed at that meeting, but I believe they, it was known at that time. Um, but I'm not sure. Brian, was, was that known at that time?
I, I'd have to go back and check the date. It was that week that Medicaid made it public and that money was coming through. I think they did because quite frankly, they knew about it before we did because it comes to the town. So they had the, they were asking questions about why it went up so much. So I would say to answer your question, Elizabeth, yes, they did know.
When was your meeting, Hillary? Was it?
It was last Wednesday. So they had to have known because you talked about it on Thursday and our meeting was at five on Wednesday.
Yeah, we talked about it Wednesday night. So they knew Wednesday, they, yeah, Wednesday morning, they would have known because they put the reports together.
And, and, and they went through the slide and they went to the next slide and I said, wait a minute, can you go back to the past slide? Because what is this about the Medicaid? So, yeah.
Yeah. It was like two-hundred-and-sixty-three percent over what was budgeted.
So, so is that something, and this is my, enough, thank, thank you for letting me ask these questions. Is there, um, is that something to bring up again at the tri-board meeting?
Def, I think so definitely because it seems like every other department is putting forth what they, when they put forth something they need, like the seventy-five thousand dollars for, um, trash collection.
Yeah.
Is voted on the spot, they get it and they're able to put forth extras that they want. Um, and we sort of are getting what's left over. And even when it's exciting and we're getting the five hundred thousand dollars for the bleachers, that's being cut back as other departments have needs.
That's two different things though. So the Medicaid reimbursement is FY twenty-two. And so that is hitting our current year, which has already been voted on as a budget. Um, FY twenty-three is what will be voted on in, in the spring. So I know when we talked about, just to, we, in our budget subcommittee meeting with, with the school, Brian and Mary and I, we did, and Brian did send an email, I think he, everyone got that, um, where he was advocating to that point about trying to get, um, more direct relief from those Medicaid for FY twenty-two. And I think Brian, uh, Greg did, Greg ordered it that potentially, um, for an amended, um, anyway, it was like maybe, basically an official maybe, um, with a little bit more words. But, um, so yeah, that was definitely one of the things that we supported him to pursue if there's an opportunity. And it was in the packet for this luck board tonight for them to discuss. And then the other part too, we talked about free, free cash. Um, at, and the town got one-point-five million back in free cash, which is from certified FY twenty-one monies, um, basically, and what Greg presented and Lori was that it looks like there was very conservative budgeting for FY twenty-one, underestimating our growth. Which resulted in this large amount that came back. Um, and although it felt very like, oh, surprise, hey, no impact. Remembering back in FY twenty-one, the school department had a budget cut for two-hundred-and-sixty-five thousand dollars. So for us, it was a direct impact because at that time, which you can't project, you know, things. But we had to use the, the CARES money to offset that. So we saved jobs. Uh, because the time the decision came down was when school was starting and we were still, you know, in the pandemic when that would have been a total disruption to education. So, um, so those, that was talked about. Um, and part of that allocation of free cash, the school district is going to get forty thousand for roof repairs. Um, fifty thousand for HVAC repairs, twenty thousand for door a repairs, and then that alumni, uh, those, those design plans, which is what they were, that one-hundred-and-seventy-five, uh, thousand, um, was to get design plans is how they, you know, expressed it. And last night, um, at FinCom, um, there were, um, a couple of members who are not happy, not having more discussion with the select board about the budget. Um, and so they are very eager to, um, talk on the twenty-second about that because they don't feel that the, the town budget subcommittee should be the only, they feel like the select board should be coming to them or speak a little bit more about these changes. Um, and just to kind of recap, it's two-point-five-three percent is what has been, um, penciled in for the increase for the school. And so I think Brian, um, what in preparing for, for next week, I'm, the questions I'm going to guess are going to be, how does that, with only two-point-five-three percent, what areas will be impacted? And I think that's where the school department will have to provide some scenario-ish planning, like what can you support with that budget and what can we not support with that budget? So just to kind of be prepared, if you can provide the school committee, some of those informational components that will probably be asked of us. As well. And it also, just to say, two-point-five-three is not a sustainable number and every year. So that's a town-wide issue that needs- As well. And I also just to say, two point five three is not a sustainable number and every year. So that's a townwide issue that needs to be. Looked at because next year it'll be asking for, don't complain when we're asking for five percent, you know, expenses keep rising. So just because you don't want to fund it one year. And I get it, you know, they have other priorities, but it, these things continue to rise.
And just because they have other priorities, doesn't mean the town has other priorities.
Yeah. I mean, exactly. I don't want, I don't, I could say more colorful things, but I'm too tired. I'm, I risk my edit is not gonna be very great right now. I continue to. Continue to go on about it.
All right, um, super, some committee reports and members' comments, Elizabeth?
Nothing to report. We have a DEI subcommittee meeting tomorrow.
Um, Mauro?
I don't have any subcommittee reports. But I just wanted to congratulate the basketball and hockey players and their great. Efforts. And then. I also wanted to just. Just put out there that it would be good if we put on an upcoming meeting soon. About meeting in person. I know that there were some. Public comments tonight about that and in previous meetings also. So I think that we definitely need to put that on a meeting upcoming. And then the only last thing was I turned in my papers for running for school committee today. And that's all I've got.
Thank you for doing that. Thank you for stepping up for the six months when we really needed the help and. For continuing to support us. The one thing that I wanted to share about the meetings in person is there was an order from the town, we can't actually have meetings in person through the end of March anyway. Greg put out.
Yeah, he said that, yeah, a notice, no, no boards are meeting in person until.
Yeah, we're not allowed to. So it's definitely something we need to talk about, but. Up until the end of, at least the end of March, it's not a school committee decision, but. I would assume in March, at the, like, starting in April, it would be our decision and we could talk about it. Mary?
Um, so the wellness committee, subcommittee met again last week to, to. Put together some of our final touches on what the policy is gonna be and and then we're meeting, I think it's next week. Charles put together a a meeting of our consultant kind of person that's coming to help us put that together and then it'll, it'll be ready to come to. The policy committee, subcommittee, and then come to the school committee. So just that, that order. And just a follow up to what you had said, Hillary, as far as school committee being able, you know, sort of. Having the ability or the authority, I guess, to to come to town meeting with our own budget. What we've, we, we haven't done that to be collaborative in the past, but what we have done is to always do a brief presentation about this is what it looks like. And, you know, the two point five three percent doesn't get us to a growth position. That kind of thing. So the town moderator always lets us do just, you know, five, ten minute thing, but. In the past, we even had a handout to people, to everybody that comes to just kind of give them a summary so that they understand exactly what's going on. So.
But isn't that tough and that it's sort of late at that point?
Yep, but it's the opportunity to, to, to talk to the audience. I mean, those are the, the people that show up at the town meetings are the ones that make all the decisions in town. So for them to hear, at least hear what the struggles are, is is any opportunity, it's like next week, the same thing, any opportunity that we have to to discuss. The the struggles that we've got, because if we don't, it looks like we can make ends meet. So, so anyway.
Also, FinCom does a public hearing also on, you know, the, so, I mean, they provide recommendations and they can. Not recommend certain things. So I don't want to lose sight of what they're, you know, you know, they're. I know it may feel, maybe the select board or some select board members don't find value in that. I find a lot of value that the. Having FinCom provide recommendation helps inform the the town. As well. I know when they don't recommend something, people consider that and it does carry weight. So.
Maybe we need to work on some outreach to the town after we have the information next week and we do the tri board meeting next week. So that maybe people in the community who are gonna be unhappy with the outcome of the budget. Have an opportunity to appeal to the select board before town meeting. To the extent that that could be helpful. I'm not sure, but. And definitely we should do the presentation and the handout.
I had another budget update, just cost centers. I don't want to wane and did a lot of work with. The cost centers and providing recommendations. So. Basically, kind of taking in the feedback and look more aligning it with the the DOE codes. Those header codes as, again, this will not change the reporting to the school committee as far as what our quarterly reports are. It's more about at what level of. Does the school committee need to be engaged during the year? When things need to be moved potentially. So if something gets moved from like maintenance to admin or something to that effect. That that Wayne and Brian would have to come to the school committee and provide reasoning and seek our, you know, approval. For that level of of change in the budget. And so I know that, and Wayne had indicated. That if, you know, adopting these recommended codes, that this would be something that the FY twenty three budget could be. Formatted for. So it wouldn't have to wait until next year, which Wayne, thank you very much for considering that. And and I think really at this point, it would just need to be, we need to pencil it in on ours. So I mean, it could be that the, the, the. The public hearing is done with the assumption that these will be the codes, you know, and and this, you know, you can kind of do all that. And then afterwards, we could, you know, vote on, you know, formally adopting them in in a policy format. That would be my, my thought with that. At a future meeting.
Okay. Mary, did you have anything else?
Nope, that was it. Thank you.
Okay. Natasha, do you have anything else or was your stuff covered?
No, it was just some special ed stuff to Jeff. We'll be having a schedule, a collaboration meeting. And so I'll send you an email from the date that the, and then we have some speakers for Autism Awareness Month. Coming up in April, we have Dr. Gab from Literacy who will be coming. So a lot of, a lot of save the dates will be. Announced within the next week or so.
All right, I actually forgot one thing. Wayne needs somebody who can join the food services contract committee. Is it still the twenty first at two, Wayne? Yeah. Is anybody, Mary is planning to go as the wellness committee representative. Is any other school committee member available at two P M on the twenty first?
Two P M on the twenty first. I don't know, Mar, I might be able to. Can I circle back and just?
Yeah. And Mauro, does that not work for you? Because.
My schedule over the next week or so is kind of up in the air. So. I'll, I'll have to, if Natasha can't, I'll have to let you know. I don't know. I'm sorry.
I'm, I'm, I'm a very likely available. Is it, is it, is it onsite? It's onsite, right?
Yes.
It's onsite in, in our, our district?
Any conference from that.
Okay, I'll, I'll check all my calendars and see if if that's something that I can. Plan. So the twenty first at what time again?
Two P M. It's this coming Monday. Or, yeah.
Okay. I'll see if I can, if I can move some stuff around if I, if. What I have on my calendar. For work and squeeze it. And what, what length of time are you thinking?
It's gonna be a good two hours.
Two hours, okay. Okay, so I'll just say, all right, I'll get back for you for sure.
Thank you.
Oh, and I have one more question. Brian. Afterwards, if you could email, I know the capital request for revenue loss, I know you had put that in as well to to Greg. Thank you for, for you and Wayne submitting that. I just, if you could follow up with. Try to align the numbers from, you know, what we had talked about with the, the thirty to forty, or thirty to thirty five annually loss and. And what was submitted and if, I don't know if there was other supporting information that we just didn't see. To, it looks like your was, it was fifty three, fifty, sorry, fifty one thousand nine hundred and fifty three dollars. So I just wanted to reconcile how those numbers. Came about. The only thing we saw was just the request.
Okay, I'll send something tomorrow.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Thanks. Uh, it's getting pretty late, but for the minutes, is everybody good with all the edits and we can maybe just approve them with the edits that are on the document? Yeah, okay. So without objection, I move to approve the minutes from. Twelve nine twenty twenty one with the edits that are indicated. Great, thanks. And Colleen, do we have? Uh, warrants to approve now?
Yes, numbers thirty three, thirty four, thirty five and thirty six. Thirty five was just recently sent to you.
Okay. Um, do any of those need to be handled separately?
Thirty three. I'll be abstaining from thirty three.
Okay, so without objection, I move to approve warrants thirty four, thirty five and thirty six. Okay, great. So those are accepted and then roll call vote to approve thirty three. Mauro?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Elizabeth?
Yes.
I'm a yes and then Natasha?
Abstain.
We need a vote, a motion in a second.
Oh, sorry. Can someone do a motion to accept that one? Number thirty three?
I'll make a motion that we accept warrant number thirty three. Second.
Okay, roll call vote to accept warrant number thirty three, Mauro?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Elizabeth?
Yes.
Natasha?
Abstain.
And I'm a yes.
Thank you, Colleen. Keep for us here.
Thank you. Okay, great. So we are all set. Thank you for those of you who stuck around for three and a half hours. And we'll see everybody again and there's actually a little over three weeks before our next meeting.
I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
Oh, Wayne has his hand raised.
Just getting back to the food service, sergeant committee, apparent, did you wanna, did you reach out to?
I did. I'm not sure that she's available. I was waiting to hear, but I know you need to move, move forward. So I had talked to Brian today and he's, he sounded like there's some other options. Okay, so thank you, everybody.
All right, I've made a motion that we adjourn, I think.
A second.
All right, roll call, Mauro?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Elizabeth? We can't hear you again. Oh, sorry. Natasha?
Yes.
And I'm a yes.
Okay.
Okay, good night. Thank you.